One calling this regularly scheduled meeting of city council to order. Master Chief, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then stay standing for our words of inspiration?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, inter the republic for which stands one nation under a invisible of liberty and justice.
Any, if you please, Brad from Grace.
Thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it very much. And just want to let you all know that our church right now is having a prayer meeting for the city of Claussen specifically, so that's where my wife's at. So she's not joining me today. But let's all pray together. Lord, we're here today to honor you and to thank you, God, for allowing us to be here. You give us breath in our lungs and you give us the strength to stand here to worship you. Your word says, "In you we live and move and have our being." And so I'd like to ask you that you bless the city council members today. Bless the mayor, God bless the conversations, but most of all, bless the city of Claussen, all of its members, all of its residents, Lord, their homes, where they live, their children. God, we're asking you watch over them. I'm asking you, Grant, understanding and wisdom in the conversations that they have today. Remind each and every one of them that they're here to be servants for their community, just as you're the greatest servant example that you've given us. I'm asking that you would bless our attitudes, our thoughts, our conversations, so that they're all pleasing to you. And I'm just asking that you be in this place today, in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
August, if you could roll call, please.
Mayor Scripture.
Here.
Mayor Protam Sampson.
Here.
Councilmember Georges.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Present.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Here.
There's a full boat, Madam Mayor, which we're gonna need if it keeps raining. Keeps raining, he's right.
Keeps raining, yes. All right, excuse me. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I actually would like to make a motion to remove the minutes from the consent agenda, which I can probably do with that part, or here. And...
One second.
That was, now I just lost my page. I wanted paper and I lost my page. I think that was, yes. Yes.
You want another copy?
No, that's fine. So I made, yes, so I make, I would, I'd like to make a motion to remove the minutes from the consent agenda.
Let's start it.
Other than that, I have no, anybody else? Wow, is there any other agenda changes?
No, just remove all the minutes.
Yeah, it's like...
Nope, all right. Do you have a second? And...
Who gets a second?
You get, I don't...
No, you get it.
I'll take it.
So the minutes become new business?
Well, um, yeah, you mind there?
That's where it would go.
Sure, let's do that.
Why don't we just do it right now to rephrase it, rephrase it to say to remove the minutes, send them back to be rewritten, as per that motion that we did a few months ago, or a few weeks ago, and then bring them back next meeting?
That's a very long motion.
I'm sure you'll shorten it.
August, are you telling us that that type of motion's more appropriate when we're...
I don't know what they're looking for. What are we looking for here?
Really to remove the minutes, send them back to you, rewrite them per that motion we made six weeks ago, or whatever, five weeks ago.
January 5th, 2021.
It's longer than that.
You had sent an email saying that there was an error.
Right.
And so they want to remove those minutes.
Okay, I adjusted the error. It was a, I, we figured it out.
Actually, there is the other error, but that's not the issue.
Okay.
But that's not why I'm asking to remove the minutes.
I'm making it new business, we'll talk about it.
Let's do new business, thank you. So...
So make that item...
The only thing we did is make a motion to take that, yes, under, move it. And nobody else has any changes to the agenda, so, did you just say? Not, okay.
Not, I guess...
You want to roll call?
Okay. Councilmember Georges.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Sampson.
Yes.
Mayor Scripture.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yes.
All right. The next on the agenda, we have public comment for items on the agenda. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to any of the items on the agenda? I can't see, I got my computer glasses on. So, no Greg, no Kathy, no, okay. All right, then we will close public comment for items on the agenda. Then next we have consideration of approving the consent agenda, which now consists of the Claussen High School police escort during the homecoming parade on Friday, October 1st, and a list of bills as presented in the amount of 257, 851, .86. Do I have a motion for that?
I move the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Let's start it.
Any, anything, nothing? Roll call vote, Mr.?
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Sampson.
Yes.
Mayor Scripture.
Yes.
Councilman Shepherd.
Yes.
Councilmember Georges.
Yes.
Passes.
All right, and we have no presentations, proclamations. Chief, were you looking, I thought you had mentioned that you were looking to do a reciprocal for the Farmington Hills for the...
Yeah, it's not written yet. August had it.
Oh, I do have that on here. We can put it on the agenda. I didn't do that. I didn't...
Well, I don't, but I don't have a resolution to read, or I don't have a proclamation to read. So I'm just, so are we still thinking?
Yeah.
It's just knows we mentioned it, so I went and, okay.
All right, thank you. I can, I'll get that to you to read in any shape or form soon.
Okay. All right, then, with no presentations and, I mean, I don't, I just know that you had mentioned it.
Would you put it on the next one, then?
That's all, I was just asking.
He's probably not completed yet.
All right. So no presentations, proclamations, and we have no public hearings this evening, so that would take us down to new business. And first item on the agenda is consideration of the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend the City of Claussen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Article 10, Division 1. This is where I lost my page again. I knew I lost a page. Thank you. Division 1, Section 34-481, Division 14, Section 34-893, and Division 21, Section 34-1104, to regulate on-premise spoken establishments. And by way of reading that, I also was making that motion, in case I neglected to say that. So nobody has to say that again.
Let's start it.
I actually did not get a chance to skim through that, because I was looking through something else. Did you get the change in there, the 21? We're good to go?
I believe it was.
It was sent to all of us, yeah, with the...
I know, I'm saying, I honest, I forgot until just now.
No, it's there.
Okay, cool. All right, then, we have a second and a motion, anybody? I mean, a motion and a second. All right, roll call.
Mayor Protam Sampson.
Yes.
Mayor Scripture.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yes.
Councilmember Georges.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Passes.
I knew I had it. I was hiding. Found it. Okay. All right. Then, item B, under new business, we have consideration of the second reading and adoption. Actually, I'm making this in the form of a motion, sorry, a motion. This item on the agenda for consideration of second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend City of Claussen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Article 10, Division 19, Section 34-1058, to regulate building materials outside the city center and... Well, I hate acronyms, CMD, what's CMD again?
Oh, God. Joe just said it the last time.
I know.
Central district, sorry.
Central mixed district, okay. All right. Outside this, this central...
It's commercial.
And the city mixed district.
Commercial issues.
Odd name. Yes, so I need a second.
Second.
All right, anybody, any further discussion from last week? Everybody's good for a second reading? No? No? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Scripture.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yes.
Councilmember Georges.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Sampson.
Yes.
We're good. Passes.
All right, thank you. Consideration of approving the engagement letter from YOANYO CPAs and business consultants for the financial audit of the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. I'll let someone else move that, because that one's not hard to read.
I move the engagement letter from YOANYO CPAs and business consultants for the auditing services for the City of Claussen for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021 to be accepted.
My second.
All right, any questions on the engagement letter, any, anything?
Is the letter good for both you and Councilmember Georges? Because you're both the experts at that.
I spoke to the YOANYO, our auditor, and asked her a few questions to make sure, so yeah, I have nothing.
Councilmember Georges?
Good.
And I know Chief Savello went ahead, which was fine. We've signed it and so they could move ahead, but, so we're just formally, yep, so all right. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yes.
Councilmember Georges.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Sampson.
Yes.
Mayor Scripture.
Yes.
We're good.
All right, then down to item D, consideration of approving a resolution, oh, sorry, resolution, resolution to establish a budget calendar that will be used in the development of the next fiscal year's budget, that would be FY 2223.
Did you motion that?
No, I just...
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any, anybody get a chance to look at it? Any questions, any thoughts, any changes?
I have thoughts and questions and comments.
Yes.
So, just kind of out of the gate, it seems like that, well, number one, it says draft for 2021, 2022. Obviously, that budget's already approved, right? So, that's not what this is for. But additionally, there's some things that seem outside of the budget process. And, you know, things that should be directed by the finance director and the city manager. And so I think this should be, I mean, I, is the intention for these to be the things that are under the council's purview? Did we run this by our financial director to get her opinion on this? It just, you know, before we, and it just seems like it's, you know, a draft, and have we gotten our financial director's opinion on it?
So just, just to back up and be clear, there was two budget calendars. One of them was looking at this year going forward, to do what we need to do in this fiscal year. And it had more specifics. And the other, second one, which is the first on the agenda, I'm sorry, the second, which is the first on the agenda, is a more generalized for the upcoming fiscal year. So, A, that doesn't answer your question, but just to clarify that there's two.
I guess I would like to see us, you know, sending it to the financial director, asking for her input on what the flow should be. Unfortunately, we don't have a city manager unless Chief Savello wants to weigh in on the budget flow. But, I mean, would you might, you have enough experience living in this, working in the city, you might have an input. But it just doesn't seem like it's a collaborative document, and I think it's important that it be a collaborative document. I mean, whichever one we're trying to, maybe it's not this one that I'm looking at, the four-page one, but I guess even that's not clear. What budget are we proposing?
Yeah, the second one, the one that's first on the thing, but that's, I think it's second in the packet, just starts with July, FY begins. And which items are you thinking that is not under council purview?
Well, not necessarily that it's not in council purview, but it's not a budget item necessarily. You know, audit finalized, right? That's not part of budget, right? I mean, that's independent of the budget.
It's part of the financial fiscal cycle.
It's not part of the budget. Audit presented to the council, not part of the budget. You know, I just think that if we're gonna approve something, that we're gonna ask that the city manager and the finance director, whose expertise is in this area, to abide by, plus, we're gonna hold the future council to it, it should be a much more collaborative document, that we've gone to the city staff, asked for their inputs and thoughts on it.
Well, actually, we wouldn't be holding the future council, because any future council can change anything. You know, they could revisit, reset it, but it's just a, at least starts on a guideline.
Then why do it?
And have asked multiple, multiple times for a budget calendar and discussion on it, and that didn't come, didn't come, and so, there you go. It's policy, it's...
Which one are we voting on of these three?
Well, like I said, the first one on the agenda appears to be the second one in the packet, which is a more generalized for next fiscal year, 2223, starting. Whereas, so, where it says July fiscal year begins, and these pages aren't numbered, so I can't tell you what page. So on the, well, no, I have it on things. So the first one that says draft FY 2122 budget calendar, that should be the second, that's the second item, or the next item on the agenda, I should say. Then, so there's one, two pages, I'm sorry, two pages of that, the last ends with June, end of fiscal year, and then the next page starts with July fiscal year begins, and again, out of order, that should be looking at this, I believe. Let's see the same. Yeah, so, the first one, well, the one we're talking about is more generic.
Okay, so, there's all the audit stuff on here, field work, that's not part of the budget process, right?
Well, it is and it isn't, because the field, the audit, and all, is when we start, when we get verification that, you know, the numbers, there's no material errors, that what we've done, budgeted and approved, and is there. It also feeds the budget with all the information that goes into the audit, it feeds the upcoming stuff, it's part of the financial calendar.
So department heads submit departmental operating needs, that's something for the city manager to do, right? Staff prepares mid-budget reports and proposed amendments. Again, city manager, right? Because they all report to the city manager.
But we're setting the policy by which they would do it by that timeline, and we would receive it. So we would be ready for our parts.
Well, you know, we went down that path, where we tried to direct the city manager how they were supposed to do it, get, you know, for our wishes versus what works for the operation of the city, and we know how that went.
This is our jurisdiction, this is our policy to set, this is our number one priority for being a council, is the financials of the city. It's what we ask for taxes on, it's how we spend the money, it's policy, it's everything. This is part of policy.
But how the city manager directs his staff to present the budgets, gathers that information, prepares the information that they have to give to us...
But it doesn't tell them how.
Is up to the city manager.
It doesn't...
Well, the city manager should know how to do that. I mean, this is, this is, I, you know, I think this is overreach, plus, you know, we're a lame duck, we should let the new council decide. That's my piece. Obviously, no one's gonna listen to me, so you guys go ahead.
Thought we listened to you pretty well last time on the age 21. Did anybody have any?
Well, that was law.
Well, I guess, you know, to councilwoman's point, as far as the, how is this authored? I guess I'd like to know a little bit more background on that.
I wrote it, because I've been trying to get this, I've been trying to get this done for a year now.
Okay.
And I finally said enough.
I mean, I like to...
It's here for anybody to change.
It says draft, right? This is not, I mean, if we, they agree in principle to move forward with the calendar, I'm...
No, that means we resolved to adopt it, and in order to change it, someone would have to come and say, "We'd like to change this."
It's gonna be changed, right?
Yeah, and I guess for that degree, I would like to have it be tightened up, I think, is the timeline is not, I think it's too far out in the future. I'd like to see...
Well, this is for next year, there's another one.
You got two years. No, I know, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the one that says RFP, maybe I've not got the right one. I'm looking at the packet, this is page 41 on the packet, draft FY 2122 budget calendar.
That's, that's not the one we're talking about.
Okay, so, okay.
It's the next one.
Okay. So if we're looking at the one that says, then that's, okay, July fiscal year begins, is that the?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, and even then, I think we need to tighten that up.
Well, define tighten.
What do we have? We have present third quarter budget report to council.
Which month, I mean, you gotta...
It's April.
Okay.
Right? So as far as whatever this, this item is for that month, I'd like to see anything that's presented to the council be prior to April 1st.
So let me, actually, let me go through it. Let me explain.
Okay.
Maybe that'll help. Let me just give a broad overview of what the budget cycle's supposed to be. So obviously, a fiscal year ends and begins, right?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty simple. Our fiscal year begins in July, and these financial cycles are not that different from place to place. The, once you get to that thing, you finalize transactions, and eventually you're gonna close the books. I don't believe you'd close the books until the audit, is checking for any material stuff. But essentially, that is when you finalize all of those entries, because council needs, you know, at least a pretty good idea of what the actual, what happened the year before, right? These things all matter. So it's, and you can't, you have, you can't put too much, I mean, there's, there's also a timing and a flow to some of that. So really, by the time you get to July, you're in that transition. You gotta know, what does it say from before, but you're not really starting anything new, because you're, you need to know the past. August, our, in order to have our, and we are behind on the audit, and that is a function of the RFP, it's not a function of any staff's problems, it's, that's when they wanted to come in, we're good. But everything has to be filed with the state before December 31st, or by December 31st. It didn't happen last time, but you should, we should not be filing reports with the state that we have not reviewed and approved. So in order to have those ready, we have to at least have looked at them by November. I mean, early, the end of November, so if there's any errors, any corrections, whatever, you got time, so they're filed timely. So that's November. Then you've got October, September, you have, you have to have time for field work. They have to do site visit, there's confirmations, there's all the stuff that goes in, it's a busy time for staff, they're running reports, they're getting the information, so that's just work time. So if you're not, and you, then, but you need to get the engagement letter, if there's anything different or unusual, it's an RFP year, it's obviously gonna be way different, but that's fine for the next several years. So that's why August is, you know, to get, and, all of this, to some extent, can be a little fluid. It's, this is what our timeframe is supposed to try and get this done, so we stay on track. And then, looking at what, and this is actually part of, I'm surprised nobody asked about this one, because this ties to, I believe, next week, next month, next pay, that we're getting a, or not an RFP, a proposal from municipal analytics.
Yeah, we should be...
Yeah. So that kind of ties to analytics under, tying our numbers, which we actually do get quite a bit of good monthly reports, but taking those as a year-end and tying those numbers to what our goals were, what were achieved, and then back to the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, and that's actually a new thing, but that'll be coming, and that could end up getting crossed off at some, if, whatever, but you had to start somewhere. And at some point, we actually have to see the prior year final numbers, so we know, what's our increase or decrease to the general fund? Do we have, how does that work with as we go forward for the budget? Again, most of September, October is really just doing the audit process, and is in terms of when, budget amendments and budget reports are typically quarterly. Now, council at any time can ask for one for any reason, at any time, but typically, they're quarterly, because you need that kind of data, you need a couple months, one month is not a trend, right? So that's the reason for the quarterly. Staff can't just hand it to you at the last day of the quarter, they've got final entries to put in, they've got some work, so, you know, it's gonna come that next month, maybe not till the last meeting, but it should. Something might happen, someone might get sick, vacation, they might post, but, I mean, this is a general track. Then you're into December, everything's filed, we know, anything there is to be known, we know our report's filed, we've looked at our actual, anything there has to be is part of that. And then we're now looking at, okay, great, we've got the context of what happened last year, we've got it verified, we move on to January, and this is where I'm saying, you know, we should be starting to look at the next fiscal year.
Yes.
And because the goal is to have those adopted plenty of time before June 1st, or, yeah, no, June 30th, sorry. And the whole process that goes around that. And this incorporates what we have not been doing, which is infrastructure, CIP, no, it is not highly detailed. It is actually meant to be, because that does build in flexibility for staff and for council, for the parts that we have to do. So, and you need to know what the department heads are doing, we need to know, they need to know what council's, you know, looking at for goals, it's kind of a give and take during that period, and yes, they do go through the city manager, they filter back and forth through that, however he wants to handle it, or she wants to handle it. And, yes, sorry. So that really, I'm trying to think of anything special, but that's your quarterly, that's your year-end, you know, we do have to set mileage rates, it basically, a lot of these timelines fit precisely with our deadlines for when they have to be done, and that's it. I mean, it is not intended to be super specific, and, but it's also intended to give a roadmap to, okay, where are we? Because right now, we are behind. We are very behind. So this is what I perceived as a, more of an ideal going forward. And again, any council can come in and change that, any city manager can come in and say, you know, this is great, but I really think this.
Yeah. And I think is, you know, with, you've got months, you get those items under those months, you know, now we need those tasks assigned, who those persons, who those persons are, how much time they need truly in order to complete those, right?
I mean, you kind of have to fit in those times, like...
No, I know, but if you've got something that's leading up, right, that's precedent, that has to happen prior to it, right, so that you can see...
Right. Like you have to have goals if staff is gonna decide some of their budget things, I mean, some of it's just gonna stay the same, we know that. But there might be new goals that they need to, and we might, they might know about capital things that they need to, yeah.
So I, there's a linear nature to this, but at the same time, there's gotta be something that's saying that, okay, well, these departments can already work in setting things up.
Well, and that's absolutely where the city manager can say, this is great, and this helps me with the council, but staff, I want this sooner, or this is what we're gonna do internally.
That's...
Entirely, you know, that's not part of, yeah, as long as we're getting what we need when to make good decisions, that, how the city manager chooses to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Georges, I heard you.
The question I have, okay, what happens if we don't get the information based on the calendar?
What do you mean, information?
What's our recourse? In other words, we're asking for something to be accomplished based on the calendar, In other words, we're asking for something to be accomplished based on the calendar, and they're gonna be reporting back to us on that calendar. Okay, this has been accomplished, this has been accomplished. What happens, or what's the recourse if they don't accomplish? What is required of that calendar?
I think we've seen that.
I understand that, that's why I'm asking the question.
The council sets policy, council approves and sets the budget with the recommendation and facilitation of the city manager, that is, one of his primary duties, and who the city manager chooses to use, finance director, outside, inside, other consultants, that is entirely the city managers, but our, we look to the city manager to make sure that we have what we need to make the right decisions, budget-wise, policy-wise. That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Sampson?
I'm good with your conversations. I know my strengths, I know.
It is not intended to be a set in stone, but it is intended to be a...
If, if there is something in there, we can always revise it.
And, and any city manager can come in and say, based on what I know, and this and that, I would like to recommend that we, you know, that council think about changing the policy, however they recommend that.
Before the date's missed.
Hopefully. You know, things happen. Just, not all the time.
Yeah, I just, I would love to see something that's already pre-established, that, hey, we go to this, this is the, the policy that we established, this is the format that we have, and this is robust enough that it can carry forward from now until whatever happens. So we don't have to worry about city managers. I mean, they, another city manager may have a different course of action, but I would like to see something get established, as far as.
Is this robust enough?
I think it's a little, we need a, a little bit more input from some of the departments, but I think it's loose enough that it's robust, right? You didn't wanna clearly define a lot of these things, right? But I guess, you know, looking at it from a Gantt chart perspective, right, this is, you know, not that, obviously, right? So you can see what can be done in parallel, what can be done prior to this, and here's your drop-dead date for these items.
Yeah, and the truth is, is at some point, when, council could ask the city manager to, to fill that in. I, I know it doesn't feel like it, or seem like it, but I actually do agree with Councilmember Moffett, in that the document needs to be specific enough, so there's a, there's guidelines, and someone has a place to start, but not so specific that we're trying to micromanage the entire process.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, we're putting into a CIP that we've never had included in this before.
Right, and that's why this one had to be done separate, 'cause that's a different timeline.
You know, city planner needs to be involved with that, planning commission needs to be involved with that.
Well, and we keep in mind, though, the CIP, once it's set, it's a five-year thing, so some of these years will be easier. And that's why, again, the city manager's gonna say, okay, well, this is a tougher year, we, we need to do an RFP, we need to do this. And, and they might come back and say, that's, I really, actually, I don't, I, I agree.
But that's, that's just not a, you know, just a, that's a long-term calendar, that here's our five-year roadmap for this calendar, that...
My hope is that the new city manager would come in and look at something like this, and bring something back, that, that maybe they have talked to staff, their finance, whoever they want, and come back and said, you know, thank you for this great start, here's what we'd like to, where we'd like to fine-tune this. That, that would be my hope.
Yep, same here.
That's, that's, but, you know, that's not now. I just don't want them to walk in the door and have absolutely no, you know, especially if we, looking at the next one, if council starts on that, we're not even gonna have a city manager for six months or so. If council, I'm sorry, if staff and council can start on a path, when the city manager steps in, they're not going, where are we, what are we doing? Oh, well, we're about right here. And, you know, they can adjust from there, but we're about right here now. This is what we've accomplished, this is where we're going, and it's much easier to step in, in my opinion. I would find it helpful. Yeah. Anybody else? Yes?
If I understand, this would be the first year that we have a calendar, budget calendar, correct?
Well, it will be if we get to the next agenda item.
Okay. Well, let's move on.
Was I clear in the motion that this is for FY 2223 forward?
That wasn't in the writing, it's, uh...
No, it wasn't in the writing, but I, I added it to my words.
Got it.
Okay. 'Cause that might help with the clarity.
Okay. Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
No.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Well, then, finally, in the same vein, the next item on the agenda was to try and put something in place for this fiscal year, for us, in the next month or so, for the next council, whomever they may be, again, who can change it, but, and, and for the city manager stepping in. And also, so, poor Scott's not going, what am I doing next? There you go. Did you get a chance to look at it, Chief?
Yeah, I s-
Not the second one, 'cause that's, but the, I'm sorry, the, yeah, this one that's about this year.
For this year coming up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was able to glance at.
Is there anything?
Just the basic calendar moving forward to keep, keep everything lined up, you're talking?
For this year. Because this one, obviously, we're past July, we're past August, we're into, so it kind of picks up.
Correct, we're heading, yeah.
Yeah, and you can catch what we've already done. I mean, I tried to capture what was already done, so we can see. And then, so yes, is there anything on here that jumped out at you, is, 'cause, you know, as acting, you would be looking at this for the next couple months?
No, as far as, just the general guidance of it, no problem, just, you know, and meeting with Kelly and keeping things moving, yeah, exactly. General guidance, moving along, no, you know, specific dates, but we do have some, some dates in there, where people...
Yeah, I didn't even set first or second, me, I was just like, some, October, you know.
We can get reports and engage personnel, of course.
The only one that's an issue, and that's, I, I think it's gonna be under unfinished business or whatever, but is that looking at, we still haven't seen, we still need an amended one, because that was, was something we already asked for. But other than that, everything is general, I, I think. Yes. So if you don't have any thoughts on that, then I'm gonna make a motion, just so we can finish discussion, that council approve the FY 2122 proposed budget calendar to help guide the budgeting process through the end of this fiscal year.
Second.
All right. Any questions on this? Do you want me to go through it again? 'Cause it's a little different? Or are we kinda clear on, obviously, the CIP kickoff, we already know that meeting, they've said it, for the end of this month. I have deep concerns that we haven't had a single meeting about American Rescue Act. So obviously, that's on here. And some of it might adjust if this proposal comes in. Other than that, anything?
No, the ARP is, that, that's, that's huge. We've got a-
Every time you say ARP, I think, Association of American-
No, 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 no.
I know. Uh, Councilmember Georges?
I'm sorry?
Did you have anything on this one?
No.
The actual?
No, it's, poor, it should be. Nope.
Councilmember Moffett?
I have the same objections, especially since this was a document created by one person, and not, is, the council's collective, or with any input from city staff. Again, that in of itself is a overreach, and I think it's inappropriate.
Anybody else? All right. August, if you wanna roll call the vote, please?
Councilmember Moffett?
Nope.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilman Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Passes.
My voice is running too.
All right, then, this is why I always do computer, not paper. That was a mistake. But my eyes are not working well today. All right, so, and that would take us down to F.
Well, weren't we on E?
There was E.
That was like D-plus.
Oh, sorry, uh, yes. D, D, okay.
Don't add that grade.
Then, yes, I'm sorry. So next, on the agenda is consideration of approving a resolution stating that the City of Claussen Sutton maintained financial policies based on the state of Michigan, fiscally ready, community best practices, communities best practices guide.
I moved it. I just wrote that up the best I could, from what you sent me, so, that works, okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Let me see here. I think I was looking at that as a, kind of a baseline, obviously. Anybody can change from there, but just more of a baseline. And nobody has questions, comments on?
Well, no one has a second yet.
Oh, sorry.
Right?
I thought you did.
I moved it.
He did, he cracked his voice.
He moved it.
Oh, I'm sorry, you moved it. Oh, okay. I'm not paying attention.
Paying attention, you're taking notes.
Yeah. I'm still on your puberty.
Oh, okay, so, we need a second, second. There we go. I thought you, nevermind.
I, yeah. All right, so, now, any questions on the best practices guide? If we get that proposal, I believe that in that conversation, looking at some of the things that are in here is exactly what municipal analytics would do, too.
Yeah, I mean, John mentioned, he mentioned many, obviously, 'cause he's, you know, an expert in the business. And I, I think, you know, him working with Kelly, if a proposal comes in and accepted through presentation, and council accepts, then there needs to be partnership with him, and, and through our finance director, and see what, what best practices roll in for the city. I don't think it can be just one.
No. Did you get a chance to look at the guide?
I didn't go through the, the entire guide, no.
'Cause, I mean, it, it runs-
I'm, I'm not finding-
It actually, one of the things in there would be to have a budget calendar.
But yeah, I mean, you know, Kelly, now, she was in, in the meeting with us, and, you know, things can be, you know, changed and updated, and we'll see when that policy comes in, and, and what the costs are during the presentation.
The proposal, I mean?
The proposal, correct.
Yes. Any other questions on it? I know you've read it. Is, I think, am I the only one that's gone to some of the training sessions? University of Michigan, they did, it's in partnership with the University of Michigan, and they have had several training sessions around this? Am I the only one that?
It's up the MSU extension.
Yeah, it's the one you, I thought you went to.
It's the MSU extension, you said you went.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh, I think someone will probably, a light, well, to Lightning? Lightning, I'm, I'm for that, sorry. Yeah, didn't you?
Yeah, that was the one that we had back in May.
Yeah, you did go to it. Okay. Didn't you go to one? No, okay. All right, well, nobody has any questions on it, so.
No, I'd like, you know, best practices, I mean, that's something they've been asking for, for a long time, and some of the things have bring, have been bringing up for the past 10 years. What are other communities doing that we can use as an example, you know, or-
Pull it all the other way.
Yeah, or the other way, yeah. And that's, you know, that, you know, we have other communities in the same situation as us, what have they done that's, that's worked, what hasn't? So I think that's, yeah, this is good. Now, does this tie, can I ask you a question? Does this tie the finance director solely to this guide amongst, I mean, she uses, you know, many, many practices and best practices, I wanna make sure, what she's using now, if it's a good practice-
There's a set of check sheets in here.
Doesn't, doesn't.
There's a set of check sheets, they're not, they're not hyper-specific, they're, you know, cash controls, and they cite a few things that are, so there's check sheets in there, and it would, in fact, if we were to pass this, it should go on the unfinished business until, because it's an assessment. This, the, the, this best practices guide starts with, here are the areas in which, if to be a fiscally sound community, and to have best practice in place to be fiscally sound, these are the, there's the, but, several different areas, I don't have the thing open in front of me, and it's basically, these are some bare minimums. These are, it, there, you can do more, some of them may not apply, and then you would say, okay, this doesn't apply to us, because we're whatever, fine. That's the nature of best practices. But there's actually check sheets that go with it, and say, where are you on this? You know, here's what, what the best practices are. Where are you right now? And if, you know, this is a no, and this is a no, and this is a no, what's the plan to get those in place? What's the plan to make sure that these things are happening? And it's policy, it's what we do. And so that would be presumably up to you, delegating to the finance director, to go through and look at them. That's why I said the municipal analytics guy, I mean, not tomorrow it has to be done, but would, some of those things, he was gonna look at our policies. So some of them would, would happen, but not all of these would fall under what he was gonna take a look at. It, it, there's several categories. Internal controls, budget, purchasing.
Yeah, what she's doing now, it might be outside of this guide, best practice for certain things she's doing, I just wanna make sure this doesn't lock her in.
Right, and if the best practice that, that's in place is better than this, that's great.
Okay.
But, yeah, this isn't about, you now have to change something you're doing that works very well, or that's, it's a better practice, and do a crappier one. It's, here's a nice floor, here's a nice set of standards, and build from there. But there is assessments in there, and frankly, I would, some of them, I don't know the answer to, I know the answer to a few of them, but I would like to see where we are, in our, how well that we have these things in place.
Okay.
And there are check sheets, and then can go, go through it, give us a report. Now, like I said, not tomorrow, might wait for this gentleman to come in, and, you know, where does this fall on that? Might make some of his stuff easier and cheaper. Yes. But it would just carry on the unfinished business until, as we... But it is a process. It's similar to some of the other things we've got. Yes. All right, well, roll call.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
All right. So we moved the minutes to item F, and my motion was to remove it from the consent agenda, and so I'm gonna make a motion that we return the minutes to the clerk, to amend and resubmit according to council policy. And if I can get a second, we can discuss that.
I'll second that.
All right, before we discuss, Renus, I wanna go through some things, because this has been somewhat contentious, and I think we need to kind of resolve this once and for all, or at least, once and for all now, today. So I'm gonna ask you a few things. Uh, wait, hold on, I gotta get that to myself. So, we act by resolution, right? We set policy-
Yes.
-by resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
And presuming that no laws are violated, and we're acting within our jurisdiction, our resolutions are authoritative.
Yes, ma'am.
And those resolutions remain policy until such time as a council passes another resolution to amend or eliminate.
Yes, ma'am.
So whose responsibility is it to record, implement, and ensure that the policies that council sets by resolution are carried out until such time as they're amended or rescinded? Whose responsibility is that?
Depending on the resolution, you may, most of the time, it would be the city manager. Depending on the resolution, obviously, it could be something that might purview, your city treasurer, your city clerk.
Correct, okay. So then, what is it called, when a staff person that's under council authority, 'cause you just listed the four positions, refuses to implement or follow a policy that council's adopted via resolution?
Yeah, I, I, we played this game in law school, it was called the Socratic method.
Well, I'm glad I could bring back memories.
I think you're looking for the term in subordination.
I am looking for the term in subordination, thank you. So on January 5th, 2021, council resolved to, that every item on the agenda have a synopsis of what was discussed by city council. Not a word-for-word verbatim, not a crazy annoying, but just a little bit of synopsis, so there was context to the motion, and in fact, if there were questions later, that might help clarify. So we passed that, and as far as I know, there has not been a change to that. So that is policy. And is there anything illegal?
No, there's nothing illegal about that.
I understand that there's best practices, I understand the law only requires a certain minimum.
Correct.
But, the law does not preclude us choosing to go a, a little bit further.
The, you know, you can, you can ask for more, yeah, I, I don't think there's anything that, that precludes, you know.
Okay. So, my motion is that we return the minutes, so they can be amended, to meet the policy that we have in place, unless someone wants to make a motion and change it, or propose changing it. And I would like to see the minutes, from here on out, not just these, reflect the policy. 'Cause I'm having a very hard time going back now, and understanding what we did, and, especially because there's no conversation, when the city manager does a report, actually, one of the nice things Mike had been doing for a while, is he was putting on there some of the items to talk about, so at least they were noted. That's not on there, either. So we don't know what was talked about, and we don't have it in the minutes. So, I would like to see us follow the policy, with these minutes and future minutes. Oh, and we also did not get minutes, side note, I can make a second motion, but, but we didn't get minutes for the goal-setting session. And in order for us to actually approve any goals, that, those minutes would have provided the basis for us to make that resolution. So we did not even get minutes for that meeting. So, I don't know if I had to make a separate resolution for something that, I don't think that's a resolution, that's just a reminder. So yes, that is my motion, that we return the minutes, have them amended to meet our policy, and do so going forward.
So, in-
I didn't get a second yet. Oh, sorry. Wow, that was a lot of conversation. Go.
Seconded right away.
Lou seconded right away.
Right away.
You seconded.
No, Sampson.
All right, okay.
He did a long time ago.
Who was seconded? My apologies, Councilmember Moffett.
See, I'm keeping good minutes, I know that he's-
See, I'm keeping good minutes, I know that he seconded it.
So, in, in the interest of conversation, August, can I ask you why it is that you construct the minutes in the manner that you do?
That's best practices according to every clerks association and MML and everyone else that we've all dealt with, all of our classes, everything that we do. That's the best practices, the minimalist type of minutes. It leaves no, nothing to be interpreted later, it leaves no language to be showing up in any other context, kicking out a context, nothing can be interpreted differently, it's yes and no.
And what would be the downside of having more detailed minutes, keeping in mind that your name, your signature has to go on this as well?
I don't know, that might be a more of a attorney question, but that's, that should answer the question right there.
I, I think your prior statement answered it. I mean, so, you know, it used to be, and for someone like me, who enjoys history, and you know, when I go back on any item that we see, that we, that comes up before council, and I go back, and we have a lot of records, actually, that go back way back in the city. And it's interesting to see that, obviously, those, you know, the minutes that were kept from the 40s are detailed to a fault, I think. Obviously, our minutes today are very different, but I think it's on account of the reasoning that, that August provided just a second ago, which is, you know, you know, best practices tell us that it should be as minute, straight into the point, who made the motion, whatever, you know, who seconded, and then what the outcome was, to leave as little to interpretation as possible. Council can make its own determinations, obviously, what it seeks and how it wishes to have, but that is, you know, I think there's reasoning behind the actions that, that our clerk takes.
Can I ask you another question?
Please.
How do the courts look at employees who perhaps are reprimanded for insubordination when their actions are taken in the best interests of said employer?
That's too hypothetical, that's too hypothetical.
I'm sorry, I'll leave it out there. That's all I got.
Thank you.
No, I just go back to, you know, some of the minutes that I've seen. I certainly, you know, echo our city attorney's opinion regarding history and making, you know, some sense of what may have occurred. It's not accurate all the time, because it can't be, unless it's verbatim, which means that we have to have a, yeah, a court reporter in here for the entire thing, and that's not what we want, right? Just a very brief, concise, something that has some flavor of what was discussed. Now, not necessarily the back and forth, right, but just that somebody said something, this is what was discussed, and this is what may have led to, gee, why did they vote that way? Well, it's in the minutes. Right.
Councilmember Georges?
It was an interesting conversation about the court reporter. In court, that, the recorder is actually recording every bit of conversation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's because the attorneys need every bit of conversation.
We love the sound of our voices, as well as the very writing of our voices. At least you're honest.
Just, just out of curiosity, what is the cost of a court reporter to spend three hours, twice a month, recording a meeting?
I'd have to, well, it depends on, they, they, and I'm going off of my memory from the last deposition that I did, I imagine it would be probably in the neighborhood of, you know, because it depends on the amount of conversation that takes place, they charge us.
Actually, do you remember King said, did that for some reason, I'll never understand why, he did it over a joint meeting of planning, council, just remember that?
We had more than, on one occasion, that we'd have a court reporter.
I don't, I never understood why. I'm not saying I want it.
Do we have, can we recording everything that's being said?
Yeah, but that's not.
And we have everything recorded.
It's very difficult to go back and watch videos when you just, you can't even search them, you can't search for keywords.
I think we don't have a requirement to keep the video as evidence.
No, we don't, we don't.
I'd love to have that, because going back prior to 2011 has, should probably shed a lot of light as far, and set a lot of this, on whether or not, you know, what do we need for that? And I was kind of disheartened by when I tried to go back past 2012, that there may be one or two videos, and that's it. Now, they may be stored someplace, not to bring that up, but that, that would love to be on a digital device, because I'm sure they would tape it at some point in time, and not necessarily as a, as actual digital. But, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm coming from, you know, the son of a librarian, right? So if we're an archivist, you know, that's where I'd like to be. And you tend to become a pack rat at that point in time, but there's a lot of things that, boy, you're gonna be finding something that's key to a decision if you go back far enough and look at it, but.
I, I, I'm actually not, I'm inclined to agree, just in the last couple of months, some of the opinions that I wrote, I had to rely on prior opinions from our prior attorneys, and I found them by way of, you know, going back and looking at our agendas packets, things of that nature. So, yeah, it's certainly understandable. To answer Mr. Georges' question, I, I think the cost, and I don't know necessarily what this means when I say the following, but the cost may be prohibitive to have a, a court reporter present here that will charge us by the words. I'd imagine it would be, each transcript would cost us in the neighborhood of 600 to 1,000, or something like that. So, I, I don't know, I mean, yeah, I mean, so long as you have taxpayers, you have an ability to, you know, pay for the services that you seek, but perhaps they may be a little over the top.
Are you aware of any other device that can record, okay, and then transcribe?
I mean, we sort of do with our, but I'm not sure whether we can sort of populate, we do with our.
You're talking like a dragon speak?
Yeah.
Or whatever that is. Something like that.
I, I imagine something exists, again, it'll be a matter of decision as far as.
Obviously, we have our closed captioning, which works so well.
That's, that's why I'm pointing at the TV across the room, because I'm thinking closed captioning, but I don't know that we can populate that speech.
Even if we did, I don't think that would always be an accurate rendering of.
Some of us would not fare well.
No, I think all of us at one point would not fare well. I, I don't know much about technology, but my understanding is speech recognition has not reached that point where it's that infallible and that reliable.
Cheaps, cheap voice recognition.
Well, yeah, affordable, how about that? Reasonable.
There is some out there. It would be something to look into. Barely assuming that there's nothing out there right now, because none of us have a need for it.
All right, I read an article the other day that was talking about tech, but said that. But yeah, I mean, if someone wants to go look into it, I'm not gonna ask, nobody else can. I just want to go to what we said, which I thought was reasonable, just a brief, not the back and forth, not a word-for-word, just a synopsis of some context, especially for those items that don't necessarily end in a resolution, but have importance. Is that it? Any other discussion? I mean, by the way, after this, when I send it back, someone can make a motion to change that whole policy. I mean, it is, you know, that is council's purview, so go ahead and roll call the vote and someone has to.
Can you repeat what the motion is?
Sending the minutes back for me to redo them according to a policy I, from January, that I'll have to pull up and read.
And, future minutes, future minutes.
Future minutes.
Because I'm learning, we're gonna need to be more specific. So yes, roll call vote.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
No.
Councilmember Sampson?
Yes.
I'm gonna presume by that vote that we would not have anybody making a different motion to rescind that resolution at this time.
Not at this time, Madam President.
At this time, okay. All right, then that takes us to old and unfinished business, and on the related topic of minutes, there's actually, we had an item in the last, last meeting that should be on here, because it was something.
Well, that's.
In fact, I remember Councilmember Sampson insisted on trying to put a date on it, and I said, no, we don't need to, because it will now go under unfinished business, to be reminded.
Talk to, yeah, we'll figure out, go through the list.
Which, which item was it?
Yeah.
Involving Renshaw policy?
No, I know that's on there.
Okay.
I mean, that was one of them, but yes, that, that actually was one of them, I know it's on, I know it.
Yeah, Renes said he would address, no need to add it, because he was gonna address it under his report when I brought it up, the two.
Well, Mr. Nushai.
Can I address it now, if you so please?
No, we can, I mean, it's on the list, and we can do that, but Mr. Nushai, you're, we set the, the policy to go under unfinished business. Are you the man now?
I made, I made a, a, a non-executive attorney decision to bring it under my report, as it being more appropriate under my report as opposed to unfinished business.
All right.
Because of the nature of the consideration that you will have with respect to it. So I can address it now, if you so wish.
No, no, there's a whole list there, let's, we can go through it, because it's on the agenda, and we can add, because there's a few that I had submitted that I don't see on there, there might be good reasons, we can get to it. But, no, actually, that was not what I was talking about. The one that we passed, the, the concern about by a certain date, and I'm like, no, it'll be on the thing. Oh, was produce an RFP for a human resources firm to review the city employment handbook, however, I am, yes, we were, that, to be on there, because I actually think that that might be something that should be done differently, but if it was under unfinished business, we could easily be like, let's talk about that.
So, I have prepared it. I have prepared the RFP, however, when I looked at, once I prepared it, I stared at it. I feel like we would be, I use gentle terminology, but there would be like some level of abdication of duty on our part, if we just go out there and say, hey, can you please come and, and teach us lowly poor folk hearing class and how to do this? Or do this on, on our behalf. This is something that we can do ourselves, one, one way, or it is something that we can, I, I would much rather go and, you know, find a company that does this specifically.
Well, I'll be honest, I looked at it again, again, thinking it was gonna be on here, and it made me, and I was thinking, you know, that might have been better to be an RFI, the thing that we talked about last time.
Request for information.
Right, where instead of going out for an immediate formal proposal, maybe it would have been a better idea to say, you know, go out and survey what kind of services are out there, what do they cost, and, and kind of bring back that, that report, so maybe we could decide from there. I'm not sure if an RFI.
May I please do that? Yeah, I think that would, that would make a lot more sense. Again, I have the RFP ready, and, and, but again, I, I think there may be a better way.
Okay, I actually, yeah, again, staying under unfinished business, it would be easy to bring that up and say, could we rethink that, which we just did? So, would you, we need a new resolution then, because this was a resolution, right?
Yeah.
I'll go ahead, I, I'm gonna make a motion that we, rather than producing and issuing an RFP for a city employment handbook, that we direct, are we directing staff, or you, or what?
Administration, then I'll figure it out between myself and Scott.
To do an RFI, which is a request for information, which is a more informal process of gathering what's out there, and coming, what it costs, and coming back with a recommendation for the best way to do that, right?
Please.
Okay, that's my motion, which would supersede this resolution.
I'll second that.
All right, any, since we already kind of discussed it when you brought it up, and, and then that would still stay under unfinished business until such time that that's come, we've looked at.
I will give you a report every week.
Even if it's still, just, yes, so it doesn't fall off the radar. Yes, so if nobody has any issue with an RFI for that, and we are gonna, so go ahead and roll call that vote, please.
I'm writing it into old business, so don't forget about it.
A plus, okay. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Do you, do you have an extra water?
I got some, you're good.
He's got one right there. Starting to sound like, what is it, Peter Brady? All right. So now, since we kind of jumped around, that, that was not on there, now it was on there, now it's back on there, and we fixed it, so, okay, great. Looking at those items, do you wanna, I guess whomever the first one wants to go through and talk about each, whomever it is most fitting to do so?
Mayor, would you like me just go down, old business, address them, and see if anyone has any input, and let you know where we're at on each one?
Yeah, so this is my memo, memo of understanding, that was, I'll, I'll give some context, too, because I went back and I actually just, I went back to everything we've done since we started as this council, because I'm not going back for years and years, and any resolutions we passed, things that were left out, and I sent a list. So one of them was the CISM memorandum of understanding that council approved by resolution a while back, and why I kind of considered that unfinished business is because if we're gonna enter, yes, I know there might have been some personnel changes, that actually was, was less of my concern than, if we're gonna enter into a, a memo of understanding, and I read it again, and there's certain things that we as a city are entering into that and saying that we're gonna do, or at least try to do, okay? Some of them we might not, some of them we can, but, and so I want that back on there because what are we doing? And for the record, I also know that planning happened to, I was chatting about CISM and some stuff with Jill and Joan, and they had actually happened to say, you know, that's actually perfect for the sustainability committee to take up, but that hasn't been an official thing, I'm just, they just mentioned it in conversation, I was like, oh, I'll talk to, you know, I don't even remember when I had the conversation, but yeah, that sounds like a great idea. But the point of that is, is we keep doing things, and then we just put them on the shelf. What's the point?
So, I did speak with Oakland County rep on that, she said we are in compliance from when we did pass the memo, there's been training that has been intended by Mr. Smith. She said we haven't ended a month, obviously, with personnel changes, she is updated. Nick was an alternate, updated to primary, Nick is getting the emails now, I am secondary as an alternative, need be. She will, we've only been.
We're not really in compliance, because like, some of the things in the memo of understanding are, you know, our thing as a city, the part we would do would be, one of the low-lying fruits would be invasives. I mean, that's what CISM does, but what do we, what are we as a city, and I know some of this, have we done this in the ordinances yet, you, planning? I know it's part of the agenda.
We restricted some.
Right, but that's part of what they, you know, looking at that, so, there's low-lying fruit, we're not gonna send people out to pull out every tree of heaven, remember that, but are we, do we, is there an education thing we can do with the community, is there, you know, things we can be, ordinances, whatever, I mean, the things that we are supposed to do, like I said, they had mentioned that might be a great place for sustainability committee to recommend some actions to planning, who then might filter up to us, I just want to know, what are we doing? You didn't really want water, you just wanted to get up and go.
I'll make a good drink.
So. Yeah, and, and going back to the landscape order, just to, I mean, we can brief this at that at some point in time, that, that just addressed plug spaces, right?
Public, yeah, yeah. It didn't address residential, or, right.
So, and that's the next.
I mean, you do remember the lady that was very upset, and I understand, when you don't understand what about the tree of heaven.
Lady you sent over to, yeah.
I didn't send over anyway. But yeah, the, the tree of heaven and how that works, and, you know, again, most people don't understand, if you start hacking down your tree of heaven, you just made your problem worse. Education.
Yes.
We could do some education without actually low investment, things like that, but again, chief, that's why I asked to put it on there, and I think there is actually already an answer, this sustainability committee that I'm mentioning to you, but you know.
But as of now, yeah, I mean, she, I just wanted to see where we were at, I explained everything to her, like, what are we missing, what are we behind? She said, you're fine, you're compliant like every other community, and just updated the personnel, but sure, we can keep that on unfinished business and see where we can move forward to accomplish a training or, or task that's on there.
Well, you know, if I might suggest, I, I asked planning if they have a, something they could, their plan, just what, do they have an idea of a direction, or planners? They said, I think they were already talking about going to sustainability, so maybe they could just give us a quick, yeah, this is what we're gonna do, these are what we think we can tackle, low-line fruit, you know, doesn't, not high cost, whatever, and come back to, maybe even if they say, well, we expect to come back within six months, or something. Let me ask these things, if we're not going to do something about them. So, all right, that one's that one. The next one was, this one's yours. It's actually a combination, it's part of what we did pass, council passed by resolution those best practices for boards and commissions, we did pass some job descriptions. those best practices for boards and commissions, we did pass some job descriptions and stuff like that, but the next steps were still outstanding, which is having that packet and having that together, so we actually did pass something that said we were going to do this, but then we've never got passed.
I've been working on it religiously actually over time, the last, oh, sorry, I'm far away from this, I've been working on it and updating what, along with our former city manager, we're working together to update what we had sent on previous occasion, and I don't believe, to incoming members of council, I don't believe the, you know, at the time of the last election this was done, I don't believe you received anything then. We realized, Mrs. Smith and I, that that was the case sometime thereafter. We did, he did pull up for my edification, what was, what used to be sent to every incoming member of council, and then as well, I located what, I believe it was done by Suzie for planning commission.
Oh, God, the magic book?
Yeah.
Yeah, we love that.
So, I have them, I've been working on them, updating them, expanding.
And you are aware that we've already passed some of those by virtue of adopting the redevelopment-ready communities part?
Expanding the council one, because it's very minute, we used to have, attempting my best to distill down some of the information that planning commission receives, because it's voluminous, and I don't believe for a second anybody actually, at least the one that I have, I don't know.
I read a lot of it.
Okay, so that makes one of you.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't referred to it in a long time, but, I mean, I, you know, that was very helpful.
Did you refer to it, George, you got mine? You did? Because those things were expensive to print, so they made me give it back.
So I have the, you know, whatever the PDF version of it was, and that one too, I don't know how, you know, I presume, you know, printed it may be a little better to as far as reference points, but the version that I have, I'm not sure what it was.
Well, I mean, the planning, planners are pretty good at that, because it's their committee and they've done a good job, but, and I mean, we have a council starting in a month.
It will be ready for a council, for new council will have a whole new packet as far as they're concerned, it may not be ideal in many respects, and it's also.
Start would be good.
Yeah, it's, it's on account, the reason I say it may not be ideal is on account of the breadth of information that our council, modern councils, even in small cities like this are required to, you know, the information that they're required to absorb and know, it's hard to distill.
You've got some of these job descriptions, they should know about the other committees, they should understand what they do, you've got those job descriptions, because we passed them as part of that thing. MML has a lovely handbook, print it and stick it in there, you're allowed to plagiarize, they don't care.
And I think that's what, not I think, that's what they had.
What is our organization chart? What is, I mean, these are not rocket science to at least get a book started, it doesn't have to be perfect. What's our charter? Charter, that might be a nice thing, charters. Not every ordinance, though.
Yeah, you know, see, the thing is.
How about how to search them?
The, the difficulty with it is when introducing a concept like, what is our charter?
Okay.
Easy enough to say, there's only about 12 chapters in it anyways, but at the end of the day, you know, the concepts behind it that you would need to know.
That's why you're supposed to do a training two weeks after they get seated to the packets you give them.
Let's get there, let's get them, let's introduce them to the packet first, and then.
But you just made the argument that when you introduce them, they should get more.
I will, I will tell you that when I started, Mike Smith was the city clerk, and I got a book.
Yeah.
I had a book with a bunch of stuff in it.
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's, that's the book that I'm working off of, I mean, I'm taking a couple, you know, I'm trying to add to it, because the initial sort of like, you know, the, the Reader's Digest version of, of, of the whole booklet is not as comprehensive as it should be, there's a bunch of like, but for more detail, see, you know, the rest of it, that's like a 30-page document in the background, so, you know, working on it, so, but it is not forgotten, and it is, you know, how's this, I've been billing you for it, that's how you know that I've been working on it.
Outstanding, and hopefully, in November, that can come off and leave it up to future councils to say if they'd like it updated, but you can say, great, we've done a packet and a training program, you know that really is part of it, right? You actually list out what your, what the training might be and when, so, yes, that would be future training.
On that topic, I have a call into MML last week trying to schedule a training, so it is ahead of time, and we're not waiting till November to schedule it, so, waiting to call back, so when the next council city, we actually have a date, and we can address the training at that point.
I gotta be, yeah, however they do it, how many of us, I know I went, how many went to the beginner, you probably haven't, the beginner training, not the advanced one, the beginner? Councilmember Moffett, did you ever go to that?
Nope.
You didn't miss much.
Two times.
Yeah, the second one was better, but the first one, the newly elected official one was, I think we could do a better job with our orientation packet and a quick session, so, or bringing them in, but it was not anything, yeah. Okay, thank you. So then next, we've got finance director update and budget amendments, we had passed a resolution asking for those back in August, and so, what's the status?
I asked Kelly on the quarterly report, she's going to present, she's given information to the auditor, she's going to present on October 19th a quarterly report and updates.
Is that report going to contain all of the, fixing all of the stuff that was brought up months ago?
And she said at that point she will have, because it's the end of the quarter, she will have an idea what the budget amendments should be.
Is that going to be everything for the, that we asked for to be done by August 11th?
I guess we can ask Kelly exactly what, but, that's a conversation I had with her in the finance world as far as the quarterly report, and that's when.
Okay, but just to be clear, we were, the budget we were presented was never good, always, there was meetings and questions that were never answered, never resolved, the agreement, Mr. Nushai, you were on the call, the agreement, the conversation was to pass that by the deadline with the understanding that there would be swift movement to make it accurate, because I was not comfortable voting for that, I knew it was not good, and I wanted it to be much more accurate, and that was what the conversation was, and that never happened.
If we did pass the resolution, they have it all back to us.
They passed it because we had no choice.
No, we passed the resolution to have all the answers by August 11th, but because things changed, we, we, nobody complained, because we knew we had to give her some time, but, you know, now we're going into September, it's a bit much.
I still don't know our final numbers, we had a much bigger surplus, according to every preliminary thing I've looked at, than we budgeted for, and that matters for our planning going forward, for the items, although now I know, at least the fire thing's been taken care of, you explained to me, but we don't have that information, we need that information, we need it for, to look at capital, the next council's going to need that when they try and decide for the American Rescue Act, for, for everything, we need to know that information, there is a much bigger surplus than we budgeted, that we can, the council can decide that some of that money will go toward some of, like, our IT, that IT was never built into the budget, we asked for an RFP, we put out an RFP, we still haven't done anything on it, and it was never built into the budget, but we know it's a priority, it needs to be in the budget, and maybe, when we look at how do we fund it, fund balance, we can absolutely go back and say, we had a surplus, we even had a bigger surplus than we want, and we want to, we want to allocate some of that surplus to taking care of this, these items that we, we know are priority, that's not in, that was not in last year's budget, or the budget that was presented to us, the budget that we approved, and it was asked for, where are the things that we've already approved? So, this is not just a standard run-of-the-mill, yeah, we're going to make our amendments for the three months, no, the budget that we launched, that we started with was flawed, and those flaws need to be addressed. So that's why we asked for it. So, you're telling us now it will be at the October 19th meeting?
Is there any way to get it earlier? That's pretty close to one.
By the way, the budget that was presented to us never even met the requirements of, and it didn't in the past either, so that was not, that was a carryforward in many ways, but there's requirements under state law, what it's supposed to have, didn't have those, didn't have that context, didn't have the information that would have been good for decision-making, we need that information, and we need, so there's, we just do, so the sooner the better. Even if it comes with, here's the items haven't done yet, but these are what we fixed so far.
Okay.
I mean, do you understand what our budget is? Do you understand from last year? Do you, are you confident in what?
No.
George?
No.
No.
Councilmember Moffett?
Absolutely, I trust Kelly, I hear all the time, it was flawed, it was flawed, and we asked numerous times what's wrong with it, the only difference between the initial budget we were presented and the final budget that we all approved was formatting, and I specifically asked for that, I think, I mean, I specifically asked what's changed from what we were presented before, and the only thing that was changed was formatting, so I think that we, you know, we've gone down this path of, you know, throwing out accusations and criticism of city staff, it's had us run through numerous employees, I think that Chi Servello asked Kelly when she could present the information, in her expert opinion, based on working with stuff day-to-day, she said October 19th, and we need to start trusting the people that we hire to do their job.
One quick question, okay, let's talk October 19th, what exactly are we going to see on October 19th? Are we going to see the first quarter, which ends September 30th? Are we going to see the final for June? What are we actually going to see on October 19th?
Kelly's here, she can talk to that. Kelly's right there, she has, she can talk to that.
Kelly Ralph, Finance Director, on October 19th, I think, you will see a variety of budget amendments, first, it'll be the first quarter amendments that will adjust any revenues that we've received, or up or down, it'll adjust any expenditures that are more or less, so it will have that, we will also have, I can provide, I know I've been asked about fire radios, I can include some capital requests.
My understanding is that's not an issue anymore, temporarily?
Well.
Yeah, I mean, they're not, they're not built yet.
It's not a rush.
Right, not, well, if it was any occasion, they would, but it's not more.
If there's any capital improvements you want me to include, to use fund balance, I can do that, and if there's anything other than that, I would need specifics on what you're looking at, because at this point in time, the budget is adopted, it's a plan, it can be adjusted throughout the year, that is what a budget is for. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Can't have it any earlier than October 19th?
Pardon me?
You can't get it any earlier than October 19th?
I will be at a conference on the 5th, otherwise I would have it for that meeting.
How soon before the meeting, so we can review it and make sure that any, because I'm not, I'm still going to be here, I'm not approving, or voting for, I should say, any budget that I haven't had my questions, had a chance to look at and ask questions, so how soon will we get it before that meeting to be able to do, to be able to review it and have those questions ready?
Probably have it by the 15th. Not sure what day that is.
It's a Friday.
Friday, Thursday night, 14th.
So essentially, in the packet.
Yes, because there needs, I need time to do any month-end adjustments to make sure that we're still on track for the budget through the year.
So, at the budget workshop that we did at one point, I brought an entire list of things, many of them never got answered, some of them were acknowledged, oh yeah, we didn't get, we didn't do that, we didn't fix that, those were all, a lot of those were things that expected to be fixed, and we got the next, when we finally approved it, they were not, so there isn't, it isn't like there wasn't a whole list of things that were already identified.
If you can, if you could just send me the specifics, I will take a look and prepare the budget amendment. I have no problem with that.
All right, so, Councilmember Georges, anything? October 15th?
October 15th, and see what happens. Part of the packet, that's fine.
Okay.
Get all of the choices.
All right, then, might want to update that to just reflect that it should be, getting that at least with a packet and in plenty of time, because we have, there's been times we have not got it with a packet.
It wasn't going to be presented to at the meeting, it would be in the packet, yeah.
It's happened before, so just, let's be clear, and I keep getting burned by, whoa, we've realized done it, and then we don't make the resolution, and I, we're getting, so, yes.
There will be a presentation at, at the meeting on the 19th.
All right, job descriptions for staff, that actually, I don't know if, I don't remember, because I went and I looked, and I couldn't tell, even for minutes with stuff in them, if that was a resolution, I do know it was mentioned multiple times, you know, that Mike was working on them or looking at them, do we have, it was one of the questions that we were asked too, when we were meeting with, what's his name, John? Yeah.
John.
We, when he asked us, do we have, what was the word he used? The thing where, in government, you have your pay scales, right, for certain positions, the positions are scaled, I think we have that in the union, right?
Correct.
Yeah, but we don't have that for positions outside of the union, so I know that was one of his questions, but do we even have, other than what's in the charter, you know, when's the last time, and I'm actually going off of what Mr. Smith was also saying, we all agreed those need to be updated, so.
Yeah, I did find a folder Thursday when I was going through the desk, and it was on job descriptions that he was putting together, so that is a work in progress that had started.
Who's going to take that up, because I don't expect you to do it?
I will, I get Nick or August to, and with the election coming up, most likely Nick to start lining all those up, I don't know what's in the folder, I went through it, I found the whole folder marked job descriptions, started flipping through there, and check with all the department heads first to make sure everyone, there's a job description for everyone that works for them.
Start maybe looking and reviewing, how old, put a date, I don't know what they look like, if they say adopted a certain day or not adopted, but, okay.
Correct.
All right, and maybe some of that will also, if Mr. Municipal Analytics comes on board. All right, the FTE report, I went back and looked, I also, actually, let me back up for a minute, to be clear, do we, should we pass a resolution that job descriptions be updated, be reviewed and updated, because we do not have that in a resolution, and like I said, I'm tired of.
Well, anytime you wish, I mean, anytime council wishes can pass a resolution, obviously, but do you need to know?
Yeah, that's what we keep saying, and then they don't show up in the minutes because they weren't by resolution.
I understand, but.
So I'm actually going to make a motion, I'm going to make one up off the top of my head, and so someone can change it, but I would like to go ahead and make that official resolution, that, that staff review update is necessary, and report back on, I mean, I'd like to see those job descriptions, we asked you specific, and I didn't expect one today, don't get me wrong, August, but, you know, it was one of the things, you're like, oh yeah, the deputy director, and we're all like, what, what does the deputy director do? I'm sure they do great things, I'm sure it's important, and it's not questioning it, but we didn't know, and so that would be.
They've all been posted in the last few months.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying, that's part of the whole thing, is we don't even know, so yeah, I think we should understand, again, you have a new council coming in, they should understand what these jobs do.
And I, I, I think, from, I agree with you, I don't dispute that at all, if anything, actually, this is all.
I don't think it's going to be done by them.
This is all, you know, it's a municipality, so this is all public, we're subject to the OMA, this should be up on a web, on our website somewhere so that everybody can see it, so in that regard, that's why I say that you don't need, the.
But we do, because it never happens.
That right, but, but the problem, I don't necessarily have a problem with the resolution, but the thinking is, and this would never happen, but, you know, think about the reverse, what happens if city manager says no, like, how do you enforce it? You don't have the authority to enforce it.
Exactly, isn't, isn't the job descriptions for any position that doesn't, the council is, doesn't have purview over, up to the city manager to create those positions, and the method with, under which they're created, they're not for us to review, it's the city managers.
We don't have, okay.
The council is entitled to it in the sense that, you know, just like any other citizen of the city is, right, you're supposed to know who works for you, this is, should be public information. You're supposed to know who works for you, this is, should be public information.
I'm not going to say who, but what.
I mean, you know, what are the, we're talking about the position, right? I mean, that's what I mean. So, in that regard, it's.
So you don't want to, okay, that's fine, I mean.
No, I'm just, my, my two cents on it, you can, yeah, that situation would never come to pass, I know that, but, but that's the thinking.
I'd like to stay happy of them, I'd like to see what we have, as it is right now, not right now, but as it is right now, it's.
This man will take care of it.
I'll scan, I'll scan what's in the folder and send it.
There you go.
Does anybody else want to see it, or just me?
Well, I'd like to see the organizational chart, right, just to see it on the website, right? And just going over some other communities, I'm like, oh, that's an org chart, that's an org chart.
We actually did get one.
Yeah, but I'm saying, does anybody to say that, okay, so.
It should be up there, you're exactly right, it should be up there, there's no reason why it shouldn't be up there.
We need to pass a resolution that it should be, that it be on our websites?
No, no, I don't, I don't think so, again, I will personally hunt down the city manager to make sure that.
The resolution, huh?
I will, I resolve to ensure that this happens.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Which actually also ties to understanding our FTEs, which we've asked for multiple times, and what we received does not reflect an FTE. I'm going to go ahead and put a pause on that, only because that was something that James was talking, we talked to him about. So, leave it on here, but let's see when he comes with a proposal, and let's just leave that, give that opportunity to see if that can get resolved through that method. Flipping to the other page, we've got the IT services, yes, because we did the RFP, and then I think there was some other stuff that was questioned, and we, we. Yeah, I'm trying to remember now.
Well, that company hadn't done a onsite, I would like to have them to come out and do an onsite. I know they, as far as their RFP, come onsite, look at everything, and, and then move forward from there. But the first thing would be to bring them actually into the billing to see what we have that goes along with our RFP they presented. I know that was a big issue council had, that they weren't, they presented that but not onsite.
So are we just doing the?
Give it a second look on that, chief?
What's that?
You're going to give everybody a second look?
Well, he's not getting a second look, he, the RFP was presented, and then.
You mean the, you mean the person recommended, recommended was presented.
The proposal, correct.
So you're saying, no, you're not going back to the others, just that one person.
And then, something like council wanted him to come in onsite to go along with it. That's where I thought we were at with it.
Yeah, but all the figures, all the proposals are public knowledge now.
I, I don't agree with that, sorry.
I actually.
And once you let a person on property to get a second look to make their.
Yeah, microphone.
Please speak, sir. Sir, I can't even hear you over here, so, thank you.
You're going to give everybody a second look, or you give one person a second look, all the, all the costs are out in the open now from everybody. Giving one person a second look, and, and he may come back and say, I gotta, I gotta raise it a little bit.
Well, that would be an issue if he changes.
They all need to have the second look together, so they're all treated the same.
Well, I think that would change everything if he came back with different numbers. I was based on the number, I would base it on his proposal that he was given, to let him be onsite is what was requested, I thought, by council.
What I would like to see, okay, is we take our current auditors, they have a IT segment, and ask them to do a review, okay, and make a suggestion as to what we should go or where we should go with the equipment. So that when we go out to bid, we can specifically say, here's the type of server we need, here's the type of wiring we got to have, here's what it's going to take to make us whole, computer-wise.
Oh, that.
Asking a vendor to come in and do it, okay, especially after looking at the numbers, one came in at 40,000, everybody else was close to 100 grand. All right, so, did the one that come in at 40, is going to say all of a sudden, well, I gotta add extras on now because I didn't account for this, we gotta do this, and all of a sudden, we're at 60, 70, 80,000 dollars with them.
You just reminded me, that was the second part of it. I think the, one of the concerns was that what we were looking at had no estimates in it for the actual hardware needs. And so, if I remember correctly, am I remembering that correctly?
I also remember correctly, however, that it was the discussion that the IT services are under the purview of the city manager, that it is up to the city manager's discretion how to run the RFP proposal. He does that, and that he or she, or they are, but it happens to be he at the moment. He runs with the RFP proposal process and selects the best candidate and presents it for approval or denial. So the process part of it is under the purview of the city manager. I think that was the conversation, was it not? That's what I thought.
Is there anything else? I mean, you guys.
And to your point, Mr. Georges, just think about, yeah, I'm not sure whether, because this was a similar conversation that we had last time on the topic. But to your point, because of our rules with respect to doing RFPs, there is a way out of an RFP and going to a specific party, company, or whatever, in the way the Voutline pursuant to our charter. It has to come from the city manager in our charter, and so long as four members of council vote to adopt, it's called, under the charter is the purchasing agent, and the purchasing agent is the city manager. So long as four members of council agree, you could forego the, the bidding with respect to anything, just about, and, you know, go with that idea. So, I, I imagine in your case, whatever that, that may be, you presented, the city manager has heard it now. If he deems it appropriate, I think you would go that route. So the path exists, but it has to follow the city manager's path.
Okay, so, is it, if I understand correctly, okay, I can ask for a cost of what it would take to have somebody come in to do an evaluation, present it to the city manager, okay, but if we want to pursue it, then just four members of the council have to say yes to it?
So the, the purchasing agent would have to make a recommendation, think about any, you know, without thinking about this specific one, and, you know, overall. Think about any, any, you know, the guys that do our concrete, Hartwell or whoever it may be. Purchasing agent that I, from what I've noticed, every year, they come back to us, and, and, you know, the city manager, whomever has been in the seat, says, these are our guys, they've been doing it for a long time, prices are commensurate, you know, you know, or it's not rocket science, they're laying cement around town. I recommend we keep them at these rates, continue the contract. And council, so far that I've seen, you know, there's been five votes here every time, that would be the process. Now, could you, I think you're asking, I know a contract, a, a, a concrete guy that could beat those prices. Yeah, nothing to necessarily stop that, you can say, hey, by the way, purchasing agent, I recommend you go and, and check with this guy.
No, I'm, I'm looking at it from a different viewpoint, though.
Okay.
I'm looking to bring in, let me call it a consultant, okay, to review our system in total, to make recommendations. We take those recommendations that he makes, and then use them for the RFQ to bid it out, so everybody's bidding apples to apples. You don't have people making analysis, okay, on their own, okay, and it's confusing, confusing the bidding process. That could be one of the reasons why we had one come in at 100,000, and you had one come in at 40.
Actually, reasonable and logical, even that, though, has to come from the city manager, because even with respect to that particular person or entity, you have to do a bidding process, and you, in order to sidestep it, it has to be a recommendation from the city manager. That's why I say, you may articulate, because there's nothing wrong with that, you can articulate that thought and say, this concrete, or this person, this consultant, would make sense for the following reasons, and then the city manager can take that, he may agree, he may disagree. If he agrees, it brings it forth to you and says, listen, that makes perfect sense, can I have four votes, four or five votes to, to, to hire this person? Unless, but it depends, of course, because there's other rules that come into play, pricing and things of that nature, so it depends on that.
Did we ever select?
That, I was just going to say, we actually did not make a selection, we did not vote to select, correct?
We need to bring the whole process back and go through them again, and.
It's the city manager's responsibility to go through them and select who he wants to present to us for suggestion for acceptance.
And I, my question is, if we have not, because the selection was brought to us, we, nobody voted to accept that selection. Questions came up, whatever, so right now, we have not made a selection.
Correct.
So if, is, is one potential course to say, what, we don't want that one? Or we have taken a second look at the whole RFP thing that we approved in the first place, and we've decided that it was a flawed process to begin with? I'm not an RFP person, where are you going with this?
Very quickly, okay, the reason the one gentleman was selected, because he was low bidder. It had nothing to do with qualifications, if he was low bidder.
I don't think that's the case, I think that, because, August is shaking his head, you were involved in the process.
Yeah, at the end, I was, yes, absolutely.
Was he low bidder?
I don't remember if he was a low bidder, but he was definitely the most qualified. That was what superseded everything else.
I mean, if we didn't get a court that made you confident of that, that's another issue, but I don't think it's fair to say that that was the only basis, because.
Moreover, I would say that Chief Servello has acquiesced to your desire to have him come in and inspect before he presents any additional candidates. So I think this is a non-issue, Chief Servello is saying that he is moving forward with gathering more information based on the input from the council. So we need to put it back into his court and let him do his job and go through the process, and when he's ready, with the new candidate, he'll present it to us for, for approval or denial again, but it's his job, and we need to let him do it.
And for the record, all I was asking for, and that wasn't to, it was just simply, what's the status?
Which he gave us.
I, I, I'm not, I'm just, that was my, that was it, just what was the status? And you're saying the status is, you're inviting him to come onsite to get that extra context.
Well, I have a call into his office, have not heard back from him, I called him on Thursday, or Wednesday of last week, and then I was out of the office. So, I'm just waiting on a call back.
Perfect, just out of, well.
The horse is dead.
Purview and the difference between who? Now, keep in mind, it's a budget issue, and, and, you know, what comes back with, if for whatever reason, it doesn't fit. That's a different thing, but right now, that is the status.
Thank you.
All right. Redevelopment Ready Public Participation Plan, that was approved, 11921. Again, it's another one of those things that we say, yes, we're going to do this, and then we never hear about it again. What's the implementation plan? What have we implemented? I know there are some things in there that actually, I think the gov text and some other things would definitely be an example of something implementing along those lines. But yeah, just, what is the, and I think that would have been Joan?
Yeah, and planning, I mean, that's based on, on planning, and I, I think maybe covering like some of the projects they had, the public hearings, et cetera, I think that falls under.
Well, it's not just planning, it's for our entire city, our public participation plan.
Correct.
But, yes, you're correct, that is the driver, yes.
It does start with the planners on it, and I think, based on the fact of the projects they had, they did have the public hearings, and yes, text my gov that we're getting into to present information more readily to the community, class and connect, the monthly newsletter that's going out, that's another, another avenue to do it.
Putting these items and asking wasn't about, they all were supposed to be resolved, it wasn't about, it was just, let's start keeping these on our radar.
Yeah, I'm just touching base on what, what we're doing with it.
And, and where are we on it, and, and even if that means, you know what, I think we'll have planning come in and give an update, because you're right, they're more driving it. And maybe they can come back and say, well, this is what we've done, and maybe here's some gaps we still, that, under the plan, we should do, but.
CIP Workshop Mondays, all part of it as well. So, I don't know if it needs to be under Old Business, I think we are, we are doing parts of it, it can't, can't be under every month.
But at some point, it actually will be implemented, at some point, there can be a report that says, here's what this public, here's what we agreed to when we adopted this public participation plan. Here's everything we said we're going to do, here's what we've done, we are on it, we've met it, we are totally in, we're, we're there, man. And then it's just a monitoring to make sure and prove, but, but, you know, getting that final, yes, we have fully implemented this participation plan. Or if we didn't fully, here's the two things we've decided simply aren't relevant, and we're not going to, or costly, or whatever. But that's just, again, I didn't expect it today.
Basically updated every month, because something new can come up, and there could be a new thing put out there.
Well, yeah, but that's not the same as, the plan, it has some specifics that says, this is, you know, what system, what procedure, what, what's there. And once it's there, doing it on an ongoing basis doesn't have to be reported, just, did we fully implement what we adopted? Yeah, I don't, I didn't expect an answer today, but just putting these things back on our radar. Yeah, and you're right, planning is probably the right place. So, the water system risk and resilience assessment, which let me say why I wanted that to be on.
It was completed in, in June or July, and if, I did ask Trevor to come if you had any questions on it.
So let me give some context, why I knew that this was, I was waiting for this to come back. When we first voted and said, and for context, you, you gentlemen might not remember, those of us that were here, every five years, we, the city is required to do a, it's a federal law, a, a risk and resilience assessment. So it's federal law, it's required. What we had approved is, this year, SACWA had arranged for a organization that was giving a discounted rate if they got enough of the people, or enough of the cities to participate. So we forged, we bypassed an RFP process, saying, okay, great, we've got this, just like Mr. Nushai just talked about, we've got this opportunity to be in this little consortium of people that we're all going to get a, a lower rate to get this required risk assessment done, and, which is what we all approved, here's council. So I, because, as everybody knows, I'm curious and I like to understand things, I sat down with Matt Hodges, and I said, explain to me what this is. Why does it mandatory? Why do we have to have every five years? Where does this come from? What's, what's the whole thing? So I have a pretty darn good understanding of it. I was waiting for it to come back, because I know exactly what now, what was supposed to. And when it didn't, and it didn't, and it didn't, another one of those things we approve, and people just assume it's, you know, whatever, it's something we had to do, we don't, it doesn't really matter, which is not true. So, that's why I asked to put it on here, and I got to say, there's, seems to be, it's like, everything that we do is, is, just, I, I don't know, it doesn't mean anything. We, we, nobody looks at it and says, this is some, we should be, this absolutely should have been something that council has briefed on. There's a public portion of it that gives an overall briefing, and then there's a confidential and privileged portion of it that we would get in a closed session, because it is about infrastructure vulnerabilities, and there's an actual specific Michigan law that prohibits, or, or makes it so, it's not even subject to FOIA. So whenever you see that OMA thing, which I've often always wondered, when do we ever have something not subject to FOIA? This is exactly it, there would be, there could be a public overall, just generally, yep, this is where we're at, things are hunky-dory, we're on this on the scale, and we're good. But the specifics of it would be presented to council, and the reason that council would get that report is because those vulnerabilities are something that gets worked into potentially, assuming whatever, what they are, into our capital budgeting, our capital plan, our infrastructure, all of those things. So, waiting for it. I was, I, I know what happened, I know that there was just a, here's the list of stupid things the mayor is up and wants taken care of, you know, she's, she's always got her issues. It got tossed in there, and I'm the only one that knew that was a bad thing. I'm the only one that knew that, and I get, frankly, we get, thank you for your amazing catch on the minutes for that little error. I find a security breach, something that by state law, we're not supposed to ever put out there, right out there in the packet, I have it pulled. I get, what's your problem? I get, it gets pulled, I'm like, worry about it tomorrow, if I'm wrong, you can all, you know, yell at me, or you can thank me. That didn't happen. And nobody looks at these things, we're putting it in there, acting, city manager, inter, or assistant city manager, emergency coordinator, pretty much our chief security officer. And it just feels like there should be more attention paid to some of these things, or even a question, what, if you don't understand what, why is it on there? It's not just stupid stuff, and, and me and my little, you know, whatever everybody thinks them, it was a meeting, it had meaning, I've been waiting for it, it was important. I knew it needed to be something that we potentially looked at for the infrastructure, and so I asked it to go back on, and it was just tossed in there, like, okay, well. And so I asked it to go back on and it was just tossed in there like, okay, well, you know, that'll shut her up. That's what I felt like.
Well, not at all, because I wasn't aware of it in June that it, when it was done. And you asked for it, so I thought you were looking for the report and I retrieved that from Trevor and forwarded on. So that's, that's what I thought you were looking for. So as far as the rest of that, um, it wa, it wasn't, oh, here's a dumb idea. You asked for it, I got the report, that's what I thought you were looking for, that's why I forwarded.
Well, I was, but I was looking for, I mean, the, what it was supposed to be, what, what the whole purpose of it and.
Well, then we can, we can have.
Oh, I know we can.
Trevor present correctly at, at the next meeting.
I was gonna say, I'm not coming, yeah, I don't want to put Trevor on the spot because I'm not sure.
Not at all.
Trevor understood this whole report.
Correct.
Unless you do and you want to come up here and do it. Yes, and that's, I'm not trying to put Trevor on the spot, but.
No. So I, I didn't make light of any of your items. I thought that's what you were looking for was a report. I had not seen it. I got it from Trevor and I forwarded on to you because of that.
At some point, and I did read it, I know that the item, you know, some of the vulnerabilities might not be on the major scale, but they should, council should have both. And overall, I mean, because it, it is something the whole public should know too, how secure, how is, is our water system and, and where did we come out on that from the public perspective? And then what are some of the specifics and the vulnerability that we, that council needs to deal with? Whether it's this council, the next is really, it, it, but it needs to, again, part of this whole capital budgeting, having the calendar and looking at these things, so probably sooner rather than later, um, and just set that closed session. Am I wrong, Mr. Nushai, that it's a closed session under the FOIA?
Yes. No, I mean, you're not wrong. You're not wrong.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
But that's the reason.
Closed session. That is the reason.
By, for items not subject to FOIA.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, it doesn't have to be next meeting, just understand that that is what, it's part of a bigger picture of something. And now all of you know. And can carry on, whoever, where's Kathy? She's gone. Or whoever else comes up here. All right. There were also, beg to differ, Mr. Nushai, there was, you pulled a few things from here, I understand. One of them was the remediation plan that on July 6th, council approved by resolution, try and tell me that it wasn't a resolution. Yes, it was, found it, showed it. By resolution to review those and how are they going to be remediated? I'm being, if you don't want it to keep coming up, where's our report? And that was supposed to be done by now.
Wait, I'm sorry, I, I'm not clued in yet, I apologize. What are we talking about?
We are talking about, I asked, or the IWC.
IWC charges, okay.
Yes. And that there was a specific resolution and, and it was supposed to have already been done and given and presented, not. So you took it off the agenda.
I did.
Can't give Chief Cervelo crap for that one.
No, no, no.
Even you crap for it.
Yes, by all means.
Because you told me specifically, you didn't pass a resolution on that.
No, you didn't, but here.
But we did, because I showed it to you.
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Here's the explanation behind it now. Uh, you passed a resolution for the city manager and the city attorney to compile the report with respect to the IWC charges, okay? We started compiling the report, we gave you updates over the course of a couple of meetings, um, and then it just so happened that the city manager was fired. At the tail end of that, by the next regular meeting of council, I brought back the, a report which contained largely, you know, it was the, it was the basis was the work that I had done with the city manager, but it wasn't finished by the city manager, but I gave you my portion of it, certainly my recommendation. At the end of that, at, at the end of my recommendation and the presentation of the report, council did not vote to take whatever action thereafter, that needed to be taken thereafter.
Because we don't know the, the specific resolution was to determine the amount and allocation.
I can't do that, I'm not the guy for it, that's not a legal question.
I understand that.
Okay.
So.
Good, so I think we're on the same page.
You're telling me that we're supposed to have another resolution, I'm saying we had a pretty clear resolution about how we were going to appropriately charge for those or go back and correct that. That was a financial thing.
Yeah, well.
I understand, you weren't going to calculate that.
I was not, no.
So, but you said.
You don't want me to do that.
When I gave you my, ha, ha, I told you so.
Yes.
Um, you also said.
That's what you meant, yeah.
No, but, but you also said, when I was giving you grief for fun, that, um, we probably needed to pass another one. You said that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so my question is, what do you, what do we need to pass? Because you've already given the report on the thing, but we're still looking for the actual billing, financial thing.
We're in the, in resolution mode, pass a resolution that directs the, the, you know, the administration to calculate, you know, the amount of IWC charges overbill to anyone in the city or underbill to anyone in the city.
Say that again?
So moved.
Thank you.
But say that again, I don't think you heard it.
No. I'm sorry, for the administration, a motion to direct administration to calculate the IWC charges either overbill or underbill in the city of Clausen.
By next meeting?
I leave timelines to you, of course.
It might not be that, I mean, there's.
I don't know.
In all honesty, I can, I, I know from what's, there, there will be some work that has to go into that. You're going to have to get work, help from the water billing, um, from Lisa. You just are, because.
Um, believe me on that, you don't owe me near numbers.
Um, I actually, so for the record, I do know this inside and out.
I know, yeah.
Not you, I'm talking to chief. I know this inside and out, you can ask me or you can ignore me, but Matt and I spent a lot of time on this because I did not understand it and I knew it was not right and I wanted to understand it. So, um, based on, we, because for the record, we also have asked multiple times for the actual explanation of how our rate, not the SACWA, how our rate is calculated and that still hasn't ever been given to us. And that also goes, I know that we have the grant for the water sewer, I know that, um, Kelly had mentioned in that meeting that, that we do have a decent amount of time before that grant expires, because that was, I couldn't remember what it was, but we do have a decent amount of time.
September 22.
Yeah, so nine of, so that's a whole, that's a year. And, but still, to this day, we don't know how our water rate was derived, the inputs or anything. And I still would like to know that. If I have to pass a, if we have to pass a resolution, that's fine, but.
No, no, you don't.
Secondary to that is the other issue and, um, I think, wasn't your report determination that it was, that we can't prove one way or another for sure, but it does not appear that it was built into the billing. It was built into just the general.
The general fund.
So, and what year, you, you stated a year to go back to.
I, I'm, I looked at, and I'm going off of memory, but probably essential limitations, six years.
Okay, I think that we have something around there, six to 10, but I think you backed up a little bit to six. So there's.
For Robert's rules, I made a motion, nobody seconded it and you're still discussing this.
I'm sorry, but this, wait.
Well, it's fine, as I'm concerned, it's dead.
Oh.
It wasn't seconded.
Yeah, so.
You don't get that call? I made the motion, anybody want to second it?
His, your, your motion was what he said.
What was the motion?
Direct administration to calculate the IWC charges either overbill or underbill.
Second.
Okay, now you can discuss, now you can discuss.
Need to know the rest, there's that many businesses, some are gone, some are there, you have to identify what business is.
I agree.
And that's going to take a little bit of time, so in answer to your question, in all fairness, no, not by next meeting.
How about as soon as practicable?
There you go.
That's fine and keep it on this list and then you can change the name, Renus.
Thank you, that made me feel a lot better, actually.
You may change, that's fine, I understand, you can change the name, but as long as.
I'm gonna call it Christmas cookies just to make sure that.
Whatever you call it, as long, well, you might not want to give the code word away.
Yeah.
As long as it is something.
Understood, thank you.
Until it's final and we get the report or the next council gets it. But no, next. All right, so that was, I, I still would really like to know what's in our water fees. But, yes.
Waiting for that part.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
It's official.
I don't know what this was. Some of this was on here because I actually wasn't sure, why did we ask for a workshop to review IT options? We did, we passed a resolution and I thought that was what we just addressed, right?
I think so.
So that can just, okay, I just want to make sure, um, it wasn't something different. All right, we did that, we added that. Your packet's going to have a training calendar? Your boards and commissions going to have a train? Actually, there was two training calendars, but that got taken off. That was something that was supposed to happen, but whatever, I'll go back and find it and pull up stuff. The ClearGov, you took that off.
Yeah, so I would suggest that all these things that aren't on the agenda, you should have made an agenda motion.
I did, I did.
You made, no, within the meeting, you should have made an agenda motion to include them or we don't discuss them because they're not on the agenda. I mean, it's part of procedure, I mean, you know, you have a whole list, you could have changed the agenda to include these, um, but they, you're, you're way off the agenda now, you're going on this whole list.
Reason I did was because I was given a heads up that some of it, for certain reasons, they recommended not, but it did not mean that I don't have the questions and they weren't unresolved items.
Well, then you should have amended the agenda to, to add them on. We have an agenda here and you're going rogue.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm saying that we did not do a full listing of unfinished business and I wanted, you know what, fine, I have one more unfinished business. We requested by resolution, a review of the, of the superintendent's termination. You sent us, and perhaps we use bad language, but, um, when I said review, I was looking for the specific reason why Matt Hodges was fired. What policy, under what policy, what, what was the process, what was, what was the reason for termination? And I still want to know that answer.
And I think that the city attorney reminded you that the, you can make that motion as an advisory capacity, but the city manager has no obligation to comply because it's not under the council's purview to direct the city manager to, in that regard.
I'm not directing him to do anything with Mr. Hodges, I'm asking, why was he fired?
You don't have.
Did we get information, Mr. Nushai? Are we not permitted to get, I thought we could get information.
No, you can get information, you can't direct.
I didn't direct, I'm asking, why was he fired?
Yeah, I mean, and, and I think that's also true, you can't direct him to give you information necessarily in that regard, but you're entitled to information, your council, your citizens, your, I mean, it's, it's, it's okay to ask, uh, same as you'll answer as he pleases, you can't force him to answer, I, I think in that regard, but.
I can say I reviewed the file in conversations, I mean, involving employment and meeting with the city attorney and he had been involved in that process, um, under his guidance. He was fine that, that the file be closed as is, not to discuss employment.
So Mr. Nushai, why was Mr. Hodges fired then?
No, no, it, it, it's an artful, an artful way to express it. I was involved in the sense that I would always be involved, um, as an attorney for this city. Mr. Smith made the decision to fire, to terminate Matt. He had asked me a series of questions, here's the answers that I would willingly give you, um, without needing a resolution. Mr. Smith asked me a series of questions over time concerning this specific employee. Uh, and there are questions on account of things that had occurred over the course of time. One of the questions was with respect to having, you know, what, what effect does a criminal offense have on employment in the city of Clausen? Okay, is that a reason to terminate somebody? I answered in the negative, there's not a reason necessarily. There are certain criminal offenses for which we would take, you know, I imagine the city manager would take such an action.
I would think embezzlement or something. I'm sure their murder might be one.
Criminal, sexual conduct, things of that nature. Certain offenses would, you know, arise at that level, I would, I would imagine, for a city manager to take that, that appropriate action. My, the offense with, with which, uh, Mr. Hodges was charged was not one of them. Uh, there was a second, a, a second question arose with respect to, I'm thinking topically, a second question arose with respect to, um, um, the issue of the job description concerning the, whether or not, um, you know, Matt had, um, whether or not he had.
Degree?
Sufficient training to overcome the fact that he didn't have the degree, uh, and all, you know, whether he made up, uh, over the course of the years with respect to experience, expertise, so on and so forth. Uh, I also answered that in the negative, in the sense that, yes, he does. He, he had enough, there was no, there would be no reason.
He had equivalent.
Yeah, equivalent, thank you, I couldn't come up with a term. He had equivalency, I, I think that, that made sense. Uh, but the answer to your question ultimately, as to why he was fired, only Mr. Smith knows that, you know, ultimately, he doesn't have, he provide, you know, he doesn't have to provide a reason. Matt was an eligible employee because of his position. So, you know, to the extent that we're seeking a reason, I understand it, but, you know, I, Mr. Smith didn't have to provide one. Not to me, he didn't have to listen to anyone, not to me or anybody else, it was his determination. I imagine then, you know, from that perspective, that's the answer, is, you know, if we, if we seek information or we're seeking the wrong person.
So you're pretty much saying that we can fire anybody we want without any reason?
Well, so that, that's actually.
Well, you did.
Yeah, you, you, as a pure technicality, a legal technicality of, of part of our employment as employees, yeah, the answer is yes, absolutely.
And we need to write a policy that doesn't happen.
Well, I, I mean, but that's.
You don't, that's how Michigan law works.
And I understand the desire, but we won't be able to override, you know, state or federal law with respect to things, you know what I mean? So I, I, I get it.
No, but Mr. Councilmember Sampson, Master Chief, I believe what you were trying to get at is policy.
Yeah, hold a policy. I'm kind of a policy. When you have these problems, there's different kinds of problems or some kind of government problems and you, tomorrow we can fire anybody that works for us, so they should all live in fear now because they could be gone. No, they can't.
I understand your point, yeah, I understand your point and I'm not disagreeing with you. I don't disagree with you.
There should be.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, part of that policy should be, when you have a key position, because this is precisely what happened with the finance, people did not understand what a, what the finance role was, they didn't, they underestimated its importance and we've seen a slow devolution for the last two years of understanding our finances, of knowing information, we've had no capital, a lot of the things that were done are just simply not being done. DPW directors are not falling off of trees. Ask Ferndale, ask Rochester. If we're going to have, I, I want the policy on what are we going to do if there's no reason, if there's no performance issues, if there's no, I broke the law and, you know, killed someone, if there's none of those things, then if we're going to make those kind of major decisions about things that affect, because that's the health and safety of this community. It is, if we were to get rid of you tomorrow, that is the health and safety because you run the police force, I don't know how you have, who you've got coming up next, I don't know their qualification, I don't know anything. I don't know anything. It's hell... And DPW, sorry, is, in my opinion, even more. It's our water safety. It's our everything. That is health and safety. So, there was a decision made based on what we don't know, why we don't know, and what was the plan? What was the plan to replace that? What was the plan to make sure any institutional... What? That is a policy. Because I... I don't think the issue that came up with the resilience report would have happened because Mr. Hodges was standing by to give that report and he knew exactly what had to be done. What is our policy when we do key positions like that? Any of them? We don't know, do we? No. Does anybody want to make a motion on that?
Isn't the policies in regard to how the employment of the city staff works under the purview of the city manager?
That's what I thought. But it's our... We judge the city manager on how well he makes sure that the city is cared for, taken care of, implements our policies, and everything else. And if the city manager uses poor judgment, in our opinion, just like, well, anybody can get fired for no reason. Poor judgment. That is perfectly legitimate.
But you can't make a resolution that he's going to be obligated to follow and again be one of those advisory resolutions?
No, no. I was talking about policy.
The policies... No, the resolution for the city manager to change the employment policies or ask you your permission for the employment policy is outside of our swilling.
I didn't say that.
What resolution are you suggesting be made then? Because anything that you just said is outside your swilling. It is the city manager's responsibility to set the employment policies for the city staff and to enact the policies for the city staff. And I'm sorry, but if you guys are going to criticize...
That's the resolution.
Firing someone without valid reasons. I mean, we went through four.
I just asked for the valid reasons.
You don't get to get the valid reasons. But don't you understand that? That's not how it works. That is an employment situation.
So, what you're saying is that the policy is that you can be fired for any reason whatsoever.
That's the Michigan law. Are you not aware that that is the Michigan law? You can fire for any... Anyone at any reason other than Title VII.
Right now, as it stands, is that the policy is that you will be fired tomorrow and you don't need to worry about why the reason is.
Michigan law is that all employment at will...
I understand that.
All right. Well, that's how the city operates.
But there's also HR departments that don't necessarily say that, okay, tomorrow I didn't like the way you walked across the hall. You're fired.
You have to leave it as an at-will employment situation because anything else puts you in a situation where you might usurp your at-will situation.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we get rid of that.
And all of that is under the city manager's purview, not the council's. And that's the issue here. The city manager is responsible for that. And that's why you hire a city manager who has the understanding and expertise. But you also... Also, can't bog the city manager down with a trillion other demands and requests. You need to let them do their job.
I don't think we have a trillion people getting fired for no reason.
No, but I'm speaking more to the diatribe that we heard about, everyone listens to me. Everyone says I'm... All these resolutions and all these things that we are telling the city manager to constantly do distracts the city manager from the basic function of operating the city. And that's what has not been responded or respected historically from this council. And that's why we've run through four of them. And that's why we're in the situation that we're in.
So, we didn't ask for many of these. Some of these were... Many of these were brought to us. So, if they're brought to us by the city manager, if we're asked to approve them, if we're, say, if he's recommending or she's recommending good policy and we say, yes, we agree with you and we go ahead and we do that, then...
But a lot of these weren't. A lot of these weren't.
And I'm going to say that, you know what? There has been a lot of clutching of the pearls and a lot of talk about how the council is overstepping. Nobody is talking about how we are not getting what we have a right to get as council. We're not... We weren't getting informed on things. We weren't getting follow-up on things. We weren't getting... There is a ton of things... Things that we need to make good, especially budgetary, tax, all those decisions. We're not getting it. And nobody seems to be worried about us, people doing their job to enable us to do ours.
I think we're definitely off topic here. We strayed egregiously from the agenda. We've discussed the things on the agenda under unfinished business, and I think we need to move on with the agenda.
Do you want a motion on writing a policy? Is that what the motion you'd like?
No, I just said, does anybody want to make a motion? I don't. I want a policy. I'm more concerned is what is our policy of transition planning? If we're going to make these decisions and nobody's going to... We're not entitled to know why or nobody's going to tell us why, I'd really like to know then, what is the... What's the plan?
I think the plan is you're going to direct the city attorney to do an request for proposal for someone to write a handbook that is compliant with all current laws, and that'll get you there. That'll be your guide. And I guarantee you, it will include at-will employment.
At the same time, let's bring it up another meeting, the next meeting.
That would take us then to...
It works out.
Do you have anything? I mean, I have plenty of unfinished business. Did I miss anything anybody thought I missed? That would take us to the... Wait. Yep, I'm on the right spot. Public comments for items not on the agenda. I'm sorry, though. My father got taken to the hospital and he tried to call me and...
Five minutes?
I need a five-minute recess. Is that okay?
Yes.
I'm going to call the meeting back to order, and I believe we left off on public comments for items not on the agenda. Anybody want to make any public comments? I see a whole giant public out there.
Andrew Hodges, 510 West Baker. Let me tell you, I'm a little flustered now after the last conversation you guys had. But anyways, I'm not here for that tonight. I'm here tonight to just give my response to DPW employee Ryan McDonald's ethics complaint. I got a copy of it and I read it. At first, I was really upset, but then I was relieved. Because for a while now, I've really felt like that I've been being watched, that I was a target because of the person who I was married to. And some of you can understand why I feel like this, but I can't go into that. This complaint only mentions certain dates, and I'm sure these employees that are named in this complaint, namely Ryan McDonald, Sergeant Jody Horn, Andrew Baker, and Rob Nicoletti, have kept tabs on where I'm walking to and with whom, waiting and watching to see if I walked with my friend, Ree Scripture. Or maybe they were just watching council people's houses, I don't know. But I really don't think these are all, just happened to be coincidence. I mean, I'm sure there's many times where they've been driving around and watching, and they just haven't told anybody. But then upon reading about Sergeant Jody Horn watching the mayor and the DDA director at a restaurant, and then immediately reporting it back to Ryan McDonald, at least that's what I took it in the complaint, sounds more like surveillance of council members, especially when you read all the complaints. But like I said previously, I'm sure these employees have been keeping tabs on certain council members for a while. And in the complaint, it sounded like it was all during working hours, taxpayer money paying for these people to do it. I mean, if you guys are okay with that, plus taking pictures of private residents. I didn't think I should have my picture taken. At least they could have got the better side of me. So my question to you, is there an official investigation into private citizens and council members being conducted by Sergeant Horn, Ryan McDonald, Andrew Baker, and Robert Nicoletti? Because they seem to know a lot about where I'm walking, who I'm walking with, and other things. Just wondering. Thanks.
Anybody else for public comment? That would probably leave you, Greg. Just lurking. That would take us to you, Mr. Newshire.
I think the only thing I've left is that information I submitted to you with respect to Renshaw. Council last time, Council last time made a motion with respect to developing a policy in this regard. And getting the documents ready to review and begin drafting something, I ran across this old information that I'd received from a couple of different sources. One, you know, some of the documents came from Michelle with respect to current policies with respect to Renshaw. One of the documents was a document that Mike Smith had done at the time that he was a city clerk. And the matter had come before council to be considered for potentially, you know, selling the property or disposing of the property, I should say. And I thought there was, you know, not that portion of it, but the general information that Mike had contained, had included, was pretty informative. And I thought when reviewing everything and considering everything we have, I thought it would be wise probably to bring all that information before council. I know that obviously all of you have been involved in the city for a long time, but I remember that only, I think, Councilwoman Moffett was on council at the time when the matter came up for a vote and considered all these documents, or their documents. I know the rest of you, again, you know, you're involved in the city, but I'm not sure how, whether you had considered seeing. So I don't know, I thought it was important, and I think, I feel like I was supported on account of how we progressed with respect to the other policies, the larger employee handbook and everything else. I think it makes sense for council to maybe have a brief discussion or have, you know, at least, or at least digest this information and consider, you know, consider how it wishes to proceed, whether this is sufficient or whether you would wish for more. I know obviously there's some legal deficiencies in these documents overall. These are things that I would address or that we would address by way of whatever policy.
What legal deficiencies?
So depending on what the council's wish is with respect to the policy, there's no, you know, there's no definitive statement here concerning what is the baseline? If we have some, you know, baseline as far as low-income housing, we're not meeting some of the state's criteria or federal criteria with this regard. Is that the route that we wish to go on?
That was what the motion was. I don't think it was reflected exactly accurately on there, because the motion was specifically to look at, I mean, there is no, okay. So just for a little context, there's two ways to look at it. There are, you can have elderly services, which by the way, the age is 62. 60 is what is in these documents. Doesn't mean it can't be changed, but there's.
We can be more inclusive. We can offer more.
No, no, in order, yes, you can, but in order to fit the criteria of providing a public benefit and not just, hey, we're renting, you need to fit, there's two, you can do elderly, you can do low-income housing. Elderly has a different set of criteria. It doesn't necessarily even have to be low-income. It can be, there's several. Low-income housing is another criteria. There's a lot of HUD guidance, and it also has to do with the area. We've already talked about this. It's just, I'm going to go back to the whole simple thing. These are, the policy, all of that's fine, and I know Mr. Smith did a lot of that work back then, but none of it speaks to how we meet the criteria of providing a public benefit for, we're just not simply renting out the units and as a normal landlord tenant. That's it.
Makes perfect sense. My question, so now that we're here specifically will be, are we considering, is council considering then continuing on with the notion of having low-income housing?
So you're asking a different question. You're asking, with all this you're bringing, you're saying, is this even what we want to do, low-income elderly, whichever.
Yeah, whichever one.
Or do we not want to do?
Or do we not want to do at all?
So that's a different question. Well, then I leave it to anybody who wants to ask or talk. And actually, Councilmember Moffett was here. Do you have anything, do you want to provide from your insights?
I think, yeah, the insight that I have is when we talked about changing the nature of Renshaw, and we were talking specifically about potentially selling it, or are we going to keep it as it was? That was one of the few meetings that we had a lot of people here for. And so I think that, and in your documents, I think you said, there was something that said there was a waiting list of 25 people. So I think.
And that may be outdated.
And that's what I was wondering. But I think that if we're going to change the nature of Renshaw apartments and not be something that we really quick get a deadline for, it's a slow roll. And that we would have to, you know, take in consideration not only the people that are living there, but the people that are perhaps already vetted and said you have a spot on the waiting list, and then take a look at what it would, what we would need to do in the future to be a low-income housing. Because we're not going to kick the current people out, and we're not going to tell people, hey, you were counting on this waiting list, and now we're pulling you off. I mean, there's a lot of things that need to be considered. So, you know, it's like a project plan. We can take a look if we're going to be elderly, if we're going to be low-income, but it's not anything that's going to be able to happen in the very near future. It's a long-term project that we're going to have to slowly walk into.
Actually, and that's exactly the conversation that I would like to get started, because we have, you know, Renshaw is, offers something great to the community. Very few communities do this. And there's a lot of reasons as to why very few communities do this. Part of, part of it deals with some of the very issues that we perhaps see with Renshaw itself, which is, we have a, we have this location with a goal that is laudable, but perhaps that requires more than just our laudable goal, but some investment as well that he has not seen in a long time. And anytime the municipality is involved in such fashion without following through with some of these other necessary items that go along with being a landlord, you know, lowercase L, I think we get to, it can be problematic for the future. So I think this conversation is necessary.
Can I, Councilmember Moffett, are you saying that what you took away from that is that the community had a strong feeling that there should be some, like you just said, define it this, define it that, but that there should be a service for elderly housing or low-income elderly housing or whatever?
The, the opinion expressed in that meeting was that no change should happen. I mean, there was people living there, and there's people, I believe that one of the intentions is to provide a place for Clausen citizens to go when they need something, an alternative. So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, to answer your question, the people that came and spoke in that meeting expressed a desire to leave things as they were.
I know.
I think a part of the.
But understanding we can't leave it exactly the way it is.
Correct.
Because, but, but the nature of it, if I'm understanding you correctly, Councilmember Moffett, what you're saying is the nature of it. They wanted a place for Clausen, old, low-income, whatever, but that kind of thing.
And moreover, though, what I'm saying is, and I think that's where you're going, is that whatever we're going to do isn't going to happen overnight, and isn't going to happen even in a couple of years, right? I mean, we need to make a plan, we need to decide what we're going to be in, we need to understand what the consequences, and that was something that I said before, right? If we're going to be low-income housing, that means that we're going to have to, you know, as I understand it, we haven't been the best landlords, right? There's not.
Do you have a further deny?
But, right, and so there's going to be a matter of, there's money that's going to have to be spent to get it up to code if we're going to be low-income housing. So we need to look at the big picture, and over the course of perhaps a couple of years, get ourselves to the place where we move towards being a low-income or an elderly, whatever we decide, and understand all the consequences of having done so.
And I agree with all except for the period of time, because we can actually accomplish the goals that we seek to accomplish, even in a shorter time span. There's more than one way to approach it. Part of the problem, I thought, and at the time I had limited voice, I was your prosecuting attorney, I wasn't sitting up here. I had no part in the conversation necessarily, but I observed it with great, with great interest because of some of the stuff that I do, some of the development that I do. And I thought the presentation, the goals, the goals were laudable, even from, you know, like, but the way that it was presented at the time was quite poor. And the community saw it as an affront to that, to the goal of providing this beautiful service the city's been providing for a long time. But I think we can accomplish, I imagine that in a reasonable conversation, properly set up, whether it be by way of workshops or some additional conversations that may need to occur to involve the community as well, I think we could probably accomplish more than just the goal, the stated goal of keeping the status quo, because the status quo is not necessarily tenable for far too, too much longer. And I think that's why this keeps coming back as a part of it. So I, you know, with your permission and if, with your agreement, maybe we should set some of these, you know, put these things in the motion to be able to have these kind of conversations, however you want to set them up.
Go ahead, Councilmember Moffett.
Doesn't that punt to the next council, though?
I figured it would be. I agree with you. I didn't think we were going to figure this out. I just wanted to get it on the.
I think that makes sense.
So, fine, community workshops are a great idea, but you can't just have a, hey, come on in and tell us what you think. Like I just said, there are different criteria for low-income, there's different criteria for elderly. There has to be, and it's really not that complicated, honestly. It's something that could easily be presented and say, look, you know, put options. Option one, you know, that it's structured this way. Option two, that it's structured this way, elderly one, low-income. And option three is, I think what you're getting at, too, is that it's time, maybe revisit, should we even be in this business? And I, I actually, I, Tom Glenn, I adore that man. I mean, I think he will haunt me and shoot me if I, so, I mean, I understand the strong feeling people have. I certainly don't have an opinion on getting rid of keeping. I just want the, if we're going to keep them, do it right. That's all.
I agree.
Meet the law. So, but if you're going to have workshops, you cannot do it, just, it has to be very structured, and somebody needs to understand those laws. Do you?
I do.
Excellent. So you can, that's great. I mean, I'm serious. So, good. I'm all for having some workshops to have that discussion, but it needs to be structured and facilitated and decided how, yeah.
Thank you.
To get people's feedback.
Thank you.
Do you need a resolution to say?
No, no, I mean, not necessarily, because obviously we're going to, we're, in many ways, I think you are both correct that it needs to be punted to the next council, however we're going to do some of this background prep work to get there. So I'll update you as we go along, but, yeah, this is great.
Anybody else before, you know, that's Sue and I. Does anybody else have anything?
No, I, I think what you're talking about, you know, the three options, I, you know, I'm curious, you know, what the ramifications would be if we just say, okay, our direction is sell.
Yeah, I'll tell you, here's my, my thought that, you know, like, has been burning ever since Matt, pardon me, Mike Smith, ever since Mike Smith brought it up when he was a clerk. The third option that should have been presented at the time, that should have, we should have had a conversation is that I don't believe, and, you know, Councilmember Moffett is going to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we talked about it in the, you know, council talked about it in that fashion, or anybody did, was, third option is, you sell it, but with conditions in place.
Oh, we talked about that.
We did talk about that. I remember that. Yeah, they did.
Grandfathering in, and basically no one was interested in that. No, seriously, they did. We talked about that, and they floated it, and no one said, yeah, sign me up. So, yeah, that wasn't considered a viable option.
These are, you know, these are interests that run with the land at the end of the day, which means that, you know, any sale that we do pursuant to these conditions and these interests that we run with the land for purposes of the, everybody there and everybody on the list, on account of how we would structure that sale, would be, you know, things would be as-is with the added improvement of, you know, whomever purchases having to keep it up to code, bring it up to code, whether it be incoming party or us.
But at the same time, how is it zoned, right? That would have some, and I don't think that's necessarily zoned residential. I think that may be part of city center, but, again, that's.
Lots of things to look at.
Yeah, exactly.
And I'm going to say this, I would, they turned over Clausen Manor, that was once the premier and prestigious, to, and look what's happened. So by virtue of turning it over private, doesn't necessarily, we might not be the best landlord so far, but I don't suspect we might hit that particular level of landlord-ing. So, I mean, that is, you can't just sell it and assume it's going to be, they, they could turn it into low-income housing and become, anything could happen. You just can't assume. And so you're, to your point, some of those zoning and maybe deed restrictions or whatever would matter.
I think, yeah, I think it is incumbent, it doesn't matter what the ultimate decision that this body makes is. It's your decision, it's this body's decision. But I think we need to, we need to resolve something.
Yes.
And that something that needs to be resolved is, there needs to be some improvement of the property itself.
Mr. Hodges? Do you have what you need to?
Thank you.
No, you do.
No, I do. Thank you very much.
Is that it? That's all?
Yes, that's all I have. Thank you.
Next, we have the city manager's report, and, go ahead.
I have a, just a couple of things. Last meeting, we renewed the lease for the Spanish preschool. They did have a COVID case in the school. They had proper protocols in place. So no city employees or any part of the billing outside of what the preschool rents has been affected. So Gina, let me know today. She put that on Facebook, so I'm just letting everyone know everything's been taken care of correctly over there. We do have the capital improvement workshop on Monday at 6:30, and we'll have notice posted this week.
Friday?
Yeah, I thought, 27th, I thought was the date.
Yeah, that's Monday.
Am I on the wrong day?
Monday.
I don't know why I was thinking it was Friday.
Monday, the 27th.
Joint meeting with planning commissioner for CIP, City Hall. I have it at 6:30, Monday, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm glad it wasn't on the wrong day.
Glad you said that.
And then I do, I do have a question for council. Gov HR reached out to me. They want to know what you would like for pay range.
Aren't they going to propose, I thought they would come to us and give us a range for our city, our size, our current.
He asked me.
And then I'm going to kick it right back and say that.
Okay.
What is?
Let him do the comparables and go from there?
And get, make recommendations based on everything, you know, size of city.
He sent me the email. I told him I would ask what he would like to do.
Anybody disagree with that?
Could we ask them to provide the data around whatever compensation they're suggesting and any additional stuff around it?
I think that's good. That is good. Anything else?
That's it.
Then I actually would like to ask, I have a question. I would actually like to know, under whose authority were we being surveilled? And what policy was that done under?
Why didn't authorize anyone to be surveilled, nor was I a part of that?
I'm sorry?
I have a little prepared thing here. Would you mind?
No.
Madam Mayor, Council Chief, Mr. Newshire, and the citizens, this is a serious problem. We have three notarized documents from an employee describing, describing a conspiracy of a group of Clausen employees to harass citizens, council members to affect the decisions made by the council members' votes. What we really have here is a signed, notarized confession of how the employee during working hours used city time, equipment, subordinate employees to harass members of the community and members of the council. I use the word harassed because of Michigan Penal Code for, codes for rent harassment of city officials, citizens, and many laws. These signed, notarized documents really are a signed confession from one employee on how he performed surveillance of government officials, citizens of the community, and former citizens of the community to effect a change in the council's decisions during the hours, during working hours, using city vehicles and requiring helps of subordinates. In these documents, he indicts two other employees, a police officer by name as accomplices in the surveillance of citizens, council members, on what looks like 14 occasions at several locations in the city. He indicts three and four, three to four other people who were providing him information, but he did not give their names. The names of individuals, the named individuals did not sign the document so their participation could be verified. These, you can't call it a chance observation, but a deliberate planned event. Since these documents have become public, many of the citizens and victims have expressed concern to me of the safety of their family and them. This is, this is the one of the ways the Michigan Code defines harassment called stalking. As the cities are responsible for protecting citizens from this type of action, both for today's elected officials and citizens of Clausen, both present and past, what I feel today, we need to do immediately. Suspend with pay all identified on the signed confession. Collect all issued cell phones tonight to protect evidence for and against these employees. Put PPO, PPO's protection orders on the mayor, Mrs. Hodges, a former citizen, and others that may request. and others that may request protection, or at least tonight, contact all involved, that they cannot, they cannot attempt to communicate, contact, stalk anyone involved. Begin investigation immediately, determine if culpability by the employees that are named as accomplices but did not sign the document, verify their participation. Identify the three or four employees noted in the submitted confession and find, and see their involvement. Begin a determination of the employment status for the employee who signed and submitted the confession. Investigate why one of the stalking incidents mirrors stalking techniques used by police and government agencies. And identify now who's gonna investigate this, 'cause I think it's close to everybody. And that goes to, I wanna know your stance.
You wanna know my stance on, as far as investigation?
Yeah.
Obviously, it could not be handled in-house for obvious reasons.
I accept that.
So, I would...
Would we go to state, please, or?
Well, I have to look, I haven't seen the documents that you're talking about.
Yes, I did, they're the, uh...
But, obviously, um...
You know, this is less about, this isn't even about me, this isn't, this is, why would anybody wanna run for office under that kind of situation? Why?
The chief hasn't quit.
I came to you, when, I mentioned this months ago, I was given a heads-up, and I paid attention, and I said something, I was blown off, sorry Lou, you did.
No, I did, she came to me and said, she was told the police were following her, and don't make any mistakes. I said, "Come on, relax, it ain't gonna happen in this town." And I apologized for, I think, in your real serious that day. When you look back at some of the minutes, you'll find out people knew exactly that I was on her porch, way back ago, and I laughed it off like, "Hey, you got anything better to do?" I got a call from a computer, you know, through a computer, so I couldn't call back, said, "Be careful, cops are looking for you." I also was called by the city that my businesses were being looked into to make sure everything was right. And instead of starting trouble over it, I just brought all the stuff in, says, "Before you make a mistake, here you go." That's everything I had. And some of them were back when COVID, and we tried to figure out what to do with the, all that paperwork at first, so I had to bring all that in and prove it, just shut mic up, 'cause that's who told them then. As, even as of two days ago, the mayor asked me, she was out of town, she said, she had a computer on her front porch. She said, "Will you get it off my front porch?" I said, "Not a problem." I turned the corner, there was a truck right down the street, right at her house. As soon as I got out of the car...
DPW truck?
A DPW truck, a big bright one. As soon as I got out of the car, immediately I could hear, "Oh shit." You know, and you just knew them guys wanted to move, and they fired the truck up and drove by me really quick, and there was a white truck that started to turn, turn around, went down, Leroy. It's a big problem. I'm tired of getting surveilled myself. I don't care if you wanna surveil me, 'cause I got nothing to do, but Ree shouldn't go through it, Mrs. Hodges shouldn't go through it, the former employee, read that thing and you'll find out who the former employee is, I mean, the former citizen, you'll find out who she is.
Were you making accusations that was not ordered through my office?
No, no, I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm asking you to investigate.
Okay.
Don't, please, don't take that. I trust you 100%.
I was simply saying, that's a problem. Why would anybody run for office when that kind of, clearly, I'm not popular with certain people, that's fine, I can deal with that. I don't, honestly, I don't even care if people between themselves wanna take pictures of my fat ass and send it to each other and mock me. I don't care, that's the world, really don't. But when it becomes like that, and other people get pulled in, and that is beyond the pale, that's just uncalled for, it's insane.
I'm gonna, I'm supporting you, because I trust you. I'm supporting the police officer named in there, because I don't think you'd be dumb enough to do something like that until you can prove otherwise. So, can you investigate it and get them people off of us?
Well...
Starting tonight?
I mean, just letting you know, starting tonight, I can't, we can't in-house investigate that when one of our owners...
Can you just give follow-up advice to everybody?
So, I will, I will make a phone call tomorrow and advise council where it's headed.
And in the documents, you have them, I gave you a copy of this, if you want to.
Well, yeah, I have to see everything evolve first, obviously, I mean, so that's...
I'll put PPOs for the people I mentioned.
Unfortunately, that's not how it works, customer roles.
This is speaking, pardon.
Sorry, I said unfortunately, PPOs are not gonna be able to be handled by the chief. It just, they just don't work that way.
Well, only the chief protects them, I don't care.
Yeah.
What you gotta do.
I understand, so I understand the concept, but that specifically, that wouldn't work.
I don't, I don't wanna live in a community, we have to do that. Chief, can you, you know how to handle it, can't you?
I know how to do it.
Thank you. That's all I care.
Okay.
City Council comments? Do we, I thought, Mr. Newshire, you were gonna do this, you said you didn't need a closed session, and you were gonna bring this up under your City Manager's Report.
Uh, yeah, actually, no, it was posted, this matter was posted, so I need the briefest closed session known to mankind.
You do want a closed session, I thought, okay. Do we need to adjourn or to the other room, or can we go to...
Need a motion to go into closed session.
I move, we go into closed session for consideration of the information pursuant to Section 8H of the OMA to consider material exemption for disclosure under Section 31G of the Freedom Movement regarding the separation of employment with city, the city and Mr. Mike Smith.
Mr. Newshire, that's not, that, that, once the agreement's signed, it's not...
It's not signed.
It's not signed.
No, I know, but it's still FOIA, I mean, what is that, that's not the right, is that the right thing?
It's subject to FOIA, yeah, it is the right thing.
That is the right thing?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. It's exempt from disclosure under FOIA.
Eventually, you know, not the, listen, the...
We're discussing the matters to...
We're discussing the matters, not the agreement per se.
Okay.
Right? It's the attorney's advice, my apologies, this has been a little interesting, obviously, so, it's the attorney's advice and my, you know, information to you, you know, that comes into play.
My second.
Thank you.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Shepard?
Yes.
Councilman Georges?
Yes.
Councilman Rothoff?
Yes.
Going into closed session at 9:28 PM?
9:28? 9:28?